Yeah, when he was swimming. Right with Mel and then with crap. Yep. Yes, you did.
Charlie too. One day Charlie, they're going down the. He's dressed for this kid on the road.
Charlie Robert?
Yeah, I had to go out.
I know Charlie. I'm not impressed with Charlie.
Oh, did you?
That was Charlie's dog. Oh, I did not know that. Oh, my gosh, that's hilarious. Oh.
How's Joanne tonight?
Good.
Well, I have a two months if I can last.
I'm gonna stay for the weekend. We can hold some weekends. No. Oh, that was fun. I'm not ashamed. You're mine.
I've never met colleagues like we're ready to start.
You're just gonna say, just, no, we're gonna wrap your thoughts. Every period. Sure, it's a surprise. Every period.
Gosh, Tom.
Oh, yeah, cuz there's always good boys. I'd be awesome.
Are you ready? Are you ready? Okay. Okay, thank you all for coming tonight. I have a lot of cords here, sorry. Um, we welcome you to the board meeting. We have to excuse tonight, we're going to excuse Karen Nelson, one of the board members who recently had a new grandbaby, and so she's visiting the grandbaby. So we'll excuse her tonight. Um, the rest of the board is here, as well as superintendent, our business administrator, and other district personnel, thanks for coming. Um, also representation from our unions, foundation, and the newspaper. So we're happy to have everybody here tonight. We will start with, um, the pledge of allegiance. If everybody could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry to start a few minutes late, but hopefully everybody had a chance. We wanted to stop and look at the displays that were in the foyer for Clark Johnson, so thank you for setting those up. Um, I believe we have Colonel Hoskins. Is he here? Did you see him? I don't see him. Do you see him? Okay, we're expecting Colonel Hoskins from Doug Weight to give us a Veterans Day message, so we're gonna skip that, and if he comes in, we'll just stop and insert whenever he comes in. But we will move on to check presentation from Cargill to the Education Foundation. Mr. Dahl.
Well, we're sure happy to find ourselves right first in the agenda tonight and to get warmed up in such a wonderful way. We wanted to take just a minute to always share good news. You know, our little theme with our bell is to ring the bell for education and success and all the things that happen, and we've got some things to ring a bell about tonight. I wanted to mention just a couple, so that you're aware of it, but within the last two weeks, we've received two generous donations that will make it possible for us to provide clothing and gifts for children between now and Christmas, nearly four hundred needy students, and we're excited about that. I wanted you to know that our visit to Stampin' Up just occurred, and we were thrilled to receive another promise and pledge of another semi-full of materials for our school district, and that will be coming within a month or a couple of weeks or so. And, uh, but tonight, uh, I'd like to invite Mr. Matt Potter from Cargill, who is also a member of our Board of Directors, Kobe Torzillo, Andrew Hall, and Tony Orton to come forth. And Kendall, where's Kendall, if Kendall would join us too? Well, let me just say, we'll show it.
You can show the audience, that's okay. Yeah, just spin.
It's worth rotating three or four times because this is the largest single cash donation that the foundation has ever received in our short little seven years. And goodness, uh, they have just been such a wonderful sustaining partner, and this represents at least eleven different projects that are made possibly because of that. Plus, it has this tremendous leveraging synergy effect of some kind, where others join in on some of these projects, and so this eventually gets converted into an even larger number. But I didn't want this month to go by, and a great month of Thanksgiving, when a gift like this comes, I'm not sure if there's really words to express to you and to your employees and your company and corporate office what that means to a school district like the Tuilla County School District. But sincerely, from all of us from the school board, and hey, everyone here tonight, thank you very, very much.
Yes.
And Matt, you've got.
Love to have you. So I just wanted to share a few things. So, um, these gentlemen here are on the, on the team that helps decide where the charitable contribution goes, and it's really been fantastic and empowering to work for a company that's willing to give back to the community to, at this level, and, uh, just a quick story. One of those eleven projects is, uh, bringing fruit to the schools and giving nutritious snacks to the kids. And I have a second, second grade girl, and she came home right after Thanksgiving. She came home with this golf ball-sized fruit carcass that was all spindly, and it was, it was amazing. And I was like, what is that? And she said, it's a Rambutan, and hands me a piece of paper explaining what it was and where it came from and why they had it at school. And it was really exciting for me to see it come full circle and have my kids bring it back to me at home. And so what I did is, Anna, can I take that to work? And so I take it to work the next day, throw it on a coworker's desk, say, look at that! And he's like, what is that? So it's really been exciting, um, to work with my team, work with Education Foundation, and it's really been fun having an impact on the students in this county. And I hope we have many more years of, uh, of partnership going forward, and I just, uh, thank you for the privilege to, uh, see the good fruits and labors that the school system does and our, uh, on our students, and see it, bring it home with my kids. It's been, it's been awesome, so, thank you.
I do have to comment too, because I went on the fourth grade field trip to the, the Salt Lake, and you were on the field trip even. They not only donate money, they go on the field trip. It's awesome.
You were complaining or you don't?
We, uh, we spend, all of, all of, all of these people right here, they've spent a lot of time donating their time outside of work, and I have a lot of coworkers that do the same. It's strongly encouraged, so it's, it's great to work for a company that supports that.
And the back of your jacket is absolutely perfect tonight. The cargo car is on measure.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you bet. You know, they, they also support all of the field trips to the Museum of Natural History. And it's interesting how many employees would rather be a chaperone to the museum than to go out and work for a day. But, uh, no, uh, let me just mention too, Tony was a member of our committee through all the West Elementary walking paths and Pavilion Project. They not only give, but serve, and, uh, set a wonderful example for all the rest of us of just how we ought to be. So thanks again, everyone, and thank you very much, school board.
Thank you, Kargill. Kendall. Great. All right, um, also each month, we have the opportunity to recognize, um, one school, and this month, we are happy to have Clark Johnson Junior High School here. And we have Principal Andy Carlson and Assistant Principal Ms. Sparks here, Krista Sparks. So we would invite you guys to come on up and make your presentations. And then when you're finished, you have a student presentation, right? Okay.
Teresa.
Yeah, go ahead.
While they're coming up, if I could just say, cuz these are two brand-new principals, and, uh, and great educators, and we're just very lucky to have them. And we celebrate great kids and great staff members, certified teachers, and classified support professionals. And we also celebrate volunteers, but at the same time, we need to recognize that you can't have good schools without great leadership, and that's as important. And they're in the front lines dealing with, uh, students and parents and teachers, and, uh, so we have excellent administrators. We appreciate what they do at Clark Johnson and all of our buildings. And so, uh, we do have a, a, a gift card as well as a certificate. We like those who come up and get a presentation to tell us who they brought with them. And then when they're done, we, we have a little gift from the foundation and from stamping up here for them. And then we like them to, you know, shake hands and, uh, let the board members express their gratitude, so. All right?
Okay, well, first, I, I would just like if those who are here for Clark and Johnson to stand up real quick. If you're here for a student, if you're a parent of one of these kiddos. Yeah. Thank you. I, uh, go ahead, thanks, guys. Uh, I, I feel super lucky. This, um, what a, what a great school, you know, I, I, I just, I kinda lucked into being the principal of an amazing place. Um, great staff, you know, I've only been there a short time, but, eh, as soon as you walk in the door, you can see, um, just what a great place it is. And the thing I think I, I, I enjoy the most about Clark is I just feel so much potential in the building. And, you know, I just came from Stansbury High School, and it's the same community, and, and I, I, you're gonna see here shortly what I'm talking about, we've, we've got some amazing kiddos. So first, um, we're gonna do our teacher of the year. Mrs. Heitzman, will you please come up here? So, Mrs. Heitzman, um, man, I, I don't know what to say, yeah.
I paid him big money, and so he let me come.
You know, obviously, our, our, our staff and people voted for her, but it's obvious, um, what she brings to Clark Johnson. She's got a giant heart, um, she's our fax teacher, she's our college career, uh, awareness teacher. She helps with the SBOs. She, which is the most important job, this next one, is she makes sure that all the potlucks go the way they're supposed to.
It's a big job.
And I think everyone truly loves you for your potluck ability. No, Mrs. Heitzman truly is, she's, I feel like she's the heart of Clark Johnson. She's always there, she's, she's the mother of, of our school. And we appreciate you, we love you, and you're very, very well-deserving of this award.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Yeah, you can tell us who you brought with you, if you have your family.
I brought my school family.
That's awesome.
You know, the.
He has them.
Yeah. The people I love the most at school. He was my student one day. When Kathy was two.
She was an early teacher. Okay, next up, we have our classified employee, and we're presenting that to Linda Kirby. So Linda will refer to her as our Jack of all trades. She's our media aide librarian, but she's also our SBO advisor, sounding board for the teachers. She organizes our T-two-A activities. Um, she's the copula- I mean, she's just, the list goes on and on of what she does at our school. She, I have found out, is always scheming ways to have fun. And what we can do to encourage kids to be their best in our school, to keep on top of their grades, ways to reward them. Just my, my vision of what a media aide librarian does, she goes way outside those boundaries and does a lot for our school. So she just, she does amazing work, and our school would not function the way it does without her. So congratulations, Linda. Do you wanna introduce your family too, Linda? I'm sure her family really wants to be introduced.
My husband Ron came with me, and six of my favorite students at the school. So nice of them.
Um, next is our volunteer. If we could have Ms. Maren Beazer come on up. Um, of, of all the, the voting and people we had to pick, I truly think this was the easiest. Um, if you go to Stansbury High or to Clark and Johnson and maybe others.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. She's, she's at everything, anything to do with PTA, she is there. Um, food for parent-teacher conferences, uh, I, I could go on. All the activities that involve that, Mrs. Beazer's always there. She, you know, she comes in, she talks, she said, hey, this is what we're doing, can we do it? And I said, yes, please do it. And she's all over it, don't have to check up on her. Uh, she's amazing, she does such, such, it's funny because no one really knows, but she's there, and she's behind the scenes and, and working so hard to get everything done. So we appreciate you, and very, very well-deserving.
Thank you.
Okay, our last award is for our student, and that's being presented to Justice Wallace. So Justice was nominated and selected because of her positive outlook on life. Uh, I gotta read a little bit of this, so I don't get it wrong. Justice has overcome many personal challenges. She was bit by a dog in two thousand and eleven, she said I could share this. So she's had to endure over twenty surgeries, and despite any challenges faced, she has remained an excellent student. So I had Justice in my office one day, and we were chatting about some things she was dealing with, and I pulled up SIS, and she had straight A's, and I started to cry. And I said, Justice, how? You know, despite your challenges, how do you have straight A's? And she says, I have a plan. And I was so impressed. She'd like to be an anesthesiologist, she'd like to attend the University of Utah. She exemplifies the resiliency and grit that we want all of our students to display. And I was just overcome with, with her ability and her outlook and how she stays positive. She has younger siblings that she's a great example for, that she is concerned about their well-being and looks out for them, a great advocate for herself and her siblings, and just an amazing young lady. So I am proud to present this to Justice. Justice, Justice, do you have some family with you?
She does, come tell.
Tell us who you have with you.
I think we can tell.
Awesome.
Thanks for coming.
Good job, Mom and Dad. I'm not sure who was more fun to watch, you were.
All right, uh, this is, I'm excited. Oh, I think they're nervous, but I'm extremely excited. I, I'm just gonna brag a little bit, and I truly mean this. I think this is the cream of the crop of Tuilla County School District about what we're about to see, so. I'm excited. Let's see what you got. Come on up, that's. Can't even get lined up, we're gonna throw.
Good evening, my name is Kasaya Philpott. I'm good at making friends and having others feel included, that's why I'm a good Jaguar.
Hi, I'm Meesley Dever, and I'm good at solving problems and making others feel included, that's why I'm a good Jaguar.
Hi, I'm Isaac Gruber, and I like to promote school spirit, help others have more fun and excitement at school. This helps me to be a good Jaguar.
I'm Noel McBride, and I'm responsible, and this helps me to be a good Jaguar.
My name's Kimball Thorpe, and I'm good at being kind, this makes me a good Jaguar.
My name is Libby Rollins, I'm reliable, and I love to meet new people, and this makes me a good Jaguar. This year, our school theme is strong enough. For example, Jaguars are strong enough to.
Be courageous.
Be kind.
To fail.
To try.
To be trustworthy.
Some of our responsibilities as stewardess body officers are morning announcements, recognizing kids around school that are doing good things, choosing the positive felt and sharing it with the school, and promoting school activities. This and lots more helps to make our school a safe and positive learning environment.
To all our future leaders, thank you. Thank you, guys, great job. Future leaders, thank you, good job.
Thanks.
Good job. Well, again, thank you, Clark Johnson. I have a special place in my heart for Clark Johnson since it's in my own neighborhood. So thanks for coming and supporting your students. Um, you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but we understand if you want to leave also. We'll give him a second. I failed to recognize our mayor-elect in the back of the room, thanks for coming. Just let him get out of the room first. Okay, next on our agenda, our patron comments, and we do have, uh, some people signed up to speak tonight. I will just remind you to keep your comments to about three minutes, um, in length of time, and when you do come up, if you can please state your name into the microphones, we have that on our recording, before you make your comments. So we first have Mason Hanson. Is Mason in here? Awesome.
Hello, I'm Ronnie. Oh, sorry. I'm Ronnie Hanson, I'm Mason's mom. Uh, we both wanted to talk, this is my son Austin, who's also on, he's my youngest son. We're here, um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the board for allowing us to come and speak with you today. And to share my story, and our story about guide dogs for the blind. Um, it's been a wonderful opportunity for our family to work with this great organization. Um, Mason raised a, a guide dog, uh, last year, his senior year of high school, and Austin here is a sophomore, and he is ra- raising Vance, who is right here by us. We got our puppies from the Vance we got when he was seven weeks old, with Leonard, we got when he was twelve weeks old. Uh, we start raising these puppies as soon as they're weaned off of their mom, and we get them, and we start training and working with these dogs. I know that, uh, we got a letter recently in the mail saying that the district has changed their policy, and they're not allowing our guide dogs in the schools any longer in Tuilla County. Um, I find this very, very sad. Um, it's been such a big part of my family's life. And I noticed your theme for Tuilla County School District is education elevated. And I think, uh, kids like this should be able to have the opportunity to bring dogs to school, to be able to elevate their education as far as they can possibly go. Mason has had a four-point-oh since he was in seventh grade, he's never had lower than a seven-point-oh. If I can brag about him a little bit, um, in your, your Tuilla School District letter that I received that our dogs were no longer allowed in the school, um, I, the, the thing that it says is during school hours of school activities, students are expected to attend their responsibilities as students rather than the activity of training a service animal. And the district further wants to avoid distractions from instruction, which would occur with students training service animals during service, during school hours. Um, so Austin started with Vance from the first day of school. Um, his last report card was a three-point-eight. His grade point average is actually higher than a three-point-eight. So to prove that it is not distracting him from his schoolwork or those in the classroom. Some of the things that I would like to share that I'm proud of Mason, that he did while he had Leonard for the year that he had him, he, um, I did it backwards. First of all, he got the Superattendant Award of Academic Achievement because he's had a four-point-oh um, all of his school years. He got a cer- Certificate of Award for Excellence from the Central Utah Section of American Chemical Society for being his, a top second-year chemistry student. He got the Mayor's Youth Recognition Award for doing service and raising Leonard, uh, through puppyhood. He also got a pathway certificate, so he is a pharmacy tech. He got his license to become a pharmacy tech. And he also got the President's Education Award Program for Outstanding Academic Achievement. He now attends University of Utah. Um, this is a certificate of scholarship that he got for two years from the University of Utah, or four years, for raising a service dog. It was part of what he talked to them about, what he had done to help out the community and to better the community around him. And, uh, with all of his honors classes, to keep a four-point-oh, he wrestled, he took fourth in state. He got the Academic Achievement Award, or the Academic All-State for Baseball. Um, I, my son is what you would consider education elevated. He does everything the best of his ability, and he always wants to do what he, what is right and the best that he can be. And I feel like this is taking the opportunity away from my Austin, um, with the opportunity that Mason had. I also have some letters here from teachers that, um, had Leonard in classes all of last year. You can, I can leave these with you, if you guys would like to read these. These are teachers saying that, um, they were not, the, let me just read one. Hello, I have absolutely no problem with Vance in class. I understand that guide dogs require a lot of work. This is this Vance. I have no understanding just how work, since my dog only knows sit. If you are willing to put the effort toward training a puppy to help a student who is blind, then I welcome the puppy in my class anytime. I don't know if there's anything I can do to, do at school to help. If there is, is, please let me know. Vance really is a perfect puppy. I hate to see Austin have to defend his work with Guide Dogs for the Blind. He has been very professional about it, and he has not been a distraction at all. I hope Vance can return and continue his training. There are so many who would benefit from a guide dog, and with him being in school, I picture a student being the recipient of Vance, and I like that. And that was Ellen Drake, world history teacher. As I said, I have six teachers who have written that, um, about Austin. I have four teachers that have written that how much they appreciated having Vance in the class with, or Leonard in the class with Mason. Uh, we were just, um, in Oregon last weekend because Leonard was matched with his blind person. Did I not bring the picture? Is the picture back there? Her name is Shalee. She was in a plane accident when she was 29-years-old. And she, um, hit the back. Her dad was flying a private plane, and her dad was killed. And she was trying to find her dad and couldn't because she couldn't see. This is Shalee and Leonard, and me and Mason last weekend in Oregon for his graduation. This is her third guide dog, and she gave us a beautiful thank you card. And on the inside, it says, "My world's a lot brighter." She said, "Thank you for all the love and time you put into Leonard and getting, giving him a good start for me." I can't tell you enough how special this has been and what a beautiful opportunity. And I don't think it's taking from the school. I think it's a good example to teach other kids to be the best you can be and reach out into your community and make your community a better place. And I feel like these dogs can do that. The, um, I, I've also been told that the reason that they were taken out is because they felt like it was a risk manage- management issue, is what I was told by Matt.
Jackson.
Jackson. And I said, "Well, let me explain that." And each one of these guide dogs, this company has been around for 75 years. It's a nonprofit organization. Each one of their dogs has a million-dollar insurance policy on them. They are covered. There is no risk for them being in the classroom. There is no risk for anybody around them. As the teachers will tell you, the dog lays there and sleeps. And most of the time gets stepped on, and with Leonard, the, the teachers said over and over, they forget Leonard was even in the room until he started to snore. And then they knew he was there. So, I don't feel like that that is an issue, and that it has been a distraction. We do have the insurance covered, like I said, with guide dogs. They do that on each one of them. Uh, we also do have a ton of training that they do do. Each week, these kids have to go do a training for two hours every Tuesday night. So, these dogs are very well-mannered. They are not out of control. And, uh, all of the school districts in Salt Lake, Jordan, Granite, all of those school districts allow guide dogs to be there. I also have a letter from the school district, the lady who's in charge of guide dogs. And I will leave that if you guys would like that too, to look over that, 'cause she explains her experience and how they've gone about it. And I think that that's, I think it's a great opportunity for these kids, and I think more should do it. I think if we can give our kids a good foundation and help them understand responsibility and caring for somebody else and thinking about somebody else. Because I'll tell you, it was one of the hardest days we had when we had to give our Lenny up. But we know that he's helping her and that she has a brighter life because of what he did. And so, I just want to have the two of them share their experience really quick, and I appreciate your time. And I would hope that we can maybe change it back so that those dogs are allowed in the school because we've had problems with people bringing dogs illegally, and we're trying to do everything the right way.
Hi, I'm Mason Hanson. Um, I'm 19-years-old. Um, I went to Tooele last year, graduated. A little disappointed I wasn't valedictorian. My AC2 score was not high enough.
Sounds like you were pretty accomplished.
I was pretty accomplished, yeah.
Kudos to you.
Thanks. It's a little intimidating. Um, I guess my experience with Leonard, um, I think, I'm guessing most of you think I just want to bring him for fun. Um, it's a really fun job. It's fun being around puppies all day. Honestly, it's a lot of work. Um, there was so many times I fought with my mom, "I don't want to bring him. I don't want to take him. I want to go hang out with my friends, do what I want." Um, it really brought me to appreciate, um, my time. Um, it really, I guess it really brought me to be responsible. Um, I had to care about someone besides myself, and I think that's a good opportunity for the kids my age. Um, a lot of them are stupid kids. They do stupid things. I'm kinda with the dogs. Um, it's not a new thing that they've been bringing dogs into school. I don't know if you guys know or not. Um, I was going to school four years there. Um, every year, we had at least three dogs come in. Yeah. Um, the strays, people see them. They're stupid. They like to bring them in. They think it's cool. Um, so it's not a new thing. Um, that's just kids being stupid, I think. Um, actually, one of my friends brought his little dog in, his backpack. That was an awful thing. Like I said, kids are stupid, so I think it's silly to take away such a great opportunity for kids just because kids are being stupid with it. Um, like I said, like my mom said, um, Leonard was never a distraction. He was literally the perfect dog. Um, and a lot of this is because they breed out, um, in guide dogs, they do their own breeding. So, every bad trait a dog has, they breed out. Um, so they never bite, they never bark. Um, they're the perfect dogs in the entire world. Honestly, I've only heard Leonard bark like three times. And he has like the deepest bark ever. It's crazy, but that was never a problem in school. He's always the best dog ever. Um, like my mom said, um, the teachers, like halfway through class, would just be like, like look down and be like, "Oh, my gosh, I forgot he was here." So, they wouldn't even notice. It wasn't a distraction at all. No kids even cared, um, at least from what I saw. Um, and most of the kids I saw, they never saw Leonard. They only saw him walking from class. Um, it was not a distraction at all. It was a good experience. And yeah.
Thanks. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you right there. Your time is up, so.
Alright.
I, I think your brother wants to say something too, so let.
Thank you, Mason.
Yeah, thank you, Mason, and, but I want to give Austin a chance to talk to if he, if you want to. I think you're wanting to, so just be free.
Alright, so I'm Austin Hanson, and I just want to talk about like the experiences with Leonard when he, when we were in Oregon last week. So, what kinda happened was is we went, we went and matched or saw Leonard's match with the blind person. To me, yeah, it was Shalee. And to me, it was like really heartwarming because like we could see how like, how it changed her. And like she like gave her perspective on how it helped her and every day and like, you know, we don't really realize how much like our sight is. Like she, she like struggled every day. She'd have to have, wake up and have her husband take her, and, and with the dog, she can go. And she was talking about how an experience is, they took her down downtown to walk around to train with Leonard when, 'cause they had to be trained and know how to handle the dog. And she was, they, they took her to, to walk around the city, and she, she just talked about how much easier it is to walk around the city and that the dog can guide her around, and she doesn't have to feel worried or stressed. And I thought that was really cool because it really like helps me know that what I'm doing is like really good and that I'm like trying to benefit people and, yeah, and it's taught me a lot of responsibility and that, yeah, it's a lot of hard work. And I like to see that I get like something to pay off, that I'm really helping somebody's life. And yeah, I don't, definitely don't think it's like a distraction for me during my schoolwork 'cause I've kept my grades up. 'Cause when I go to class, he just lays down. He doesn't really do much. And yeah, so I think that's a neat experience, and I think kids should be able to take advantage of this. And just because people bring in their therapy dogs, doesn't mean that we should be taken away from the opportunity because it really does help out kids and change, change, change them themselves.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. It sounds like you're quite accomplished also, so congratulations. If you want to leave anything, you can leave it with Diane over here, and we'll get, we'll get it. You want to, sure. I don't know, I can't read the Halverson. I see Halverson, but I don't know your Rachel.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to talk on behalf of Guide Dogs for the Blind. I'm Rachel Halverson. My dog is Pearson, and he's four months old, and he's the youngest in the county right now. Now, my perspective is very different from our high school students. I don't get to take a dog to high school. I am a caregiver, so I get to socialize my dog a couple of days a week, and there's a huge, huge difference. I feel very strongly that the high school environment prepares a working guide dog for all of the distractions that we have in daily living, and that's why it's so important. In fact, Mason, for me, with my first guide dog puppy, brought him to high school one time. And that helped tremendously because of the distractions like bells and the food from the cafeteria and kids throwing spit wads and stepping on their paws and stepping on their tails just accidentally. These dogs need to know that those are distractions and how to ignore them. But it's also been transformative for me. I'm a cancer survivor. Prior to that, the way that I paid for my college education was to work five jobs. My GPA was 3.4. It made me lose incredible opportunities. Had I had the focus and the guidance of being responsible for a guide dog when I was in high school, at the time that I was a four-point-oh student, I think that I could have carried that on to my college situation and not had to work five jobs to put myself through school. The Pell Grant was, that I had was not sufficient for me to hit all of my educational goals. I can proudly say that I do now carry a master's degree in business administration, but I was a workaholic. I learned that to get ahead in life, you had to work five jobs. Not that one way to get ahead or to elevate your community was to do service. That is why I've embarked on this journey with my colleagues, because it's so important to give back to the community. And I don't think that our community would have the abilities for scholarship and other opportunities that it may have by introducing this program. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Abigail Gertson? Sorry if I, I apologize. That's incorrect.
Um, hi, my name is Abigail Gertson. I am a junior at Stansbury High School. Um, and I'm obviously here, uh, also to talk about the recent changes in the policy concerning service animals in training. In the policy that we were sent, it talks about, um, service animals in training no longer being allowed in classrooms and hallways because, uh, you, the district is concerned about employees and volunteers, um, being engaged in helping us train the service animals rather than their duties. And I just wanted to set the record straight that, um, when we are at school and when we are working on the dogs, um, it is a private activity that we are in. We do not require the, um, help of the teachers, and we let them focus on what they're there to do. We focus on what we're here to do. Like the Hansons, I also am a four-point-oh student, so the dog has not distracted from my schoolwork. Um, I've also participated in NHS, FCCLA, and several Red Cross blood drives, and the dog has not hindered any of that. I also went to my teachers to just hear from them, so it's not a biased opinion, um, to say that Saint's not a distraction in the classroom. And I just wanted to read you one of the letters that my English teacher, um, Mrs. Andress Henry wrote. She says, "I am writing on behalf and in full support of Abby Gertson and Saint. Gertson and Saint attend my class regularly. Never has Saint been a problem in class. Gertson has educated the class as to her and Saint's needs and purposes. The class has agreed to abide by the rules, guidelines, and boundaries the guide dogs have set. Saint is not only being well-trained, but he is also very well-behaved, co-op- and a cooperative member of our class following the class rules, guidelines, and boundaries as well. In our class, Saint only, not only learns how to appropriately socialize, the class also learns how to behave appropriately socially toward, uh, towards and around Saint, as well as how to behave and support Saint's future blind companions. It is important to note that Saint will be a seeing-eye dog and is not simply an emotional or therapeutic animal. Because of this, Saint must learn how to negotiate many different distractions as well as environments to successfully guide a blind person. The training is rigorous, and without real environment, Saint's training is hindered. Could you imagine getting a seeing-eye dog that had never been in a public school before? Think about the pastimes, stairs, and fire drills. There are so many things seeing able-bodied people have to negotiate, let alone a dog supporting its companion must know immediately what to do. Uh, Gertson is not paid to train. She does this out of the deep sense of responsibility and service. Next year, she hopes to be a Sterling Scholar, and her training with Saint will give her a edge in that competition. And service animals cost thousands and thousands of dollars, but the program that they are associated with gives the dogs a way to the person in need. Some more recent dogs.
Finish your thought.
From Abby's program have gone on to serve deaf as well as blind people. Not all dogs are allowed to finally complete the rigorous training, um, and graduate, but Abby's work and program have had huge successes. So, uh, just to sum up what they've said, and we can give you as many policies that the dogs have and insurance is, but when it comes down to it, they are different, and they're not just emotional support animals to people. They're here to serve a purpose, and they are highly trained, and they're working on it. So, um, in regards to the policy, um, I understand why it's there, and I understand, um, that it's there not because of anything these guys did wrong, but just, um, people thinking that they're, all the dogs are the same, and they're not. But just to appeal to, if there was a way to approve these guys who are registered with a nonprofit organization, who are being weekly trained, who have the necessary medical and insurance policies, um, if there was a way that, to show the difference and to show that they are special.
Thank you, and again, congratulations on your accomplishments.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming. Okay, and Becca Hall.
Hello, my name is Becca Hall. I am a first-grade dual-language emerging teacher at West Elementary. I am a mother to two students, um, within our school district. Uh, I am the wife to one of those very handsome Cargill employees who was just up here. Um, but tonight, I am here as, uh, an executive board member from the Tooele Education Association, and I'm here representing them. We have several members with us tonight, but I'm not going to make them sign up unless they want to. And TDA would like to acknowledge and thank the board, um, for the amount of time, effort, and support that each of you have demonstrated in regards to the voted local levy. Um, we support your commitment to the goals of teacher and employee compensation, recruitment, and retention. And we want to assure you that the positive efforts that you've given on behalf of the levy have not gone, have not gone unnoticed. When we all work together for the improvement of our district and ultimately our students, we can accomplish great things. And the passing of this levy will have a direct impact on morale and motivation in our classrooms, in the schools, and in the community, which will in turn, um, support and encourage the district's goal of truly elevating our education. We are grateful to work with the board that not only understands but actively supports Tooele teachers and its employees. So, on behalf of TDA and personally from myself, we wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. No, these are all good comments. The peo- the rest of the people on the agenda might be sad. Just so you guys know, on the comments of the guide dogs, we can't take any action tonight on your comments because it's not on our agenda. So, thank you for your comments, but we won't talk about it or take any action on it tonight. Well, what is the process now? You can submit your comments, um, you know, we, they can talk about it in the SCS group and come back to us. But at this point, you know, we've had recommendation from our legal counsel on the policy. So, the board has pretty much said, "This is our policy based on legal counsel." So, if we can get a diff- if we get a different recommendation, it's something that somebody would have to bring back, somebody who, if somebody wanted to bring it back on the board, they could, but at this point. Go ahead, Scott.
Figure out how to work the microphone here. I, I, I would just suggest maybe at this point, to President Manziel's comments, it would need to be brought back by a member of the board. Any of us could potentially ask for it to come back on the agenda another time, you know, in the next you know, in the next board meeting, whatever that might be. And we would just communicate that through our normal processes to get an agenda item added. So I would suggest maybe reaching out to board members individually is probably a good, good place to start that conversation. At least, that's my
That's my
direction is, you know, we're all available. Our email addresses and things are on the board, on the website and you can catch up with us however that is. I think you can find us. And we'd welcome those comments and we could have a discussion individually and then we could go from there. Is that
I think you're welcome to submit that because if you submit it, we'll all get a copy of it. So then we can all read it.
Is that fair? I, I'm not, not trying to put more legwork on you, but at least you get some direction.
Then when it's actually, or if it gets on the board agenda, then discussion and decision can be made, but it wasn't posted on the agenda. And at that point in time, Mr. Jackson and possibly legal counsel would be able to weigh in on
Yes.
Yes, he is.
Way too mad.
And we share, we, we'll share the information with the superintendent staff also, so.
And I guess, just so you understand, and we're constrained. It's not a case that, you know, we don't want to have that conversation tonight. It's just, we're constrained that it has to be on the agenda for us to have those conversations, so.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a consent calendar, which includes the minutes, expenditure report, revenue report, dispersment report, personnel decisions, some, one amended trustland plan, and some hundred and fifty mile contests. Unless there is anything that needs to be polled, I would entertain a motion in regards to consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent items as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ooh, I think Julia won. Okay, so Scott, the motion is by Scott and Julia seconded. Is there discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Six point one, business administrators' reports, Mr. Reynolds. Always some lively reading. I mean that in the nicest of ways, too.
I just had a few things I wanted to bring up and, and one of them was just because it was such a hit a couple of years ago. I haven't given it to you since and so the first document that I don't know if we want to put it up yet or not. Okay, just in case somebody in the audience wants to see it, they can know where to find it here. Expense by location, correct. Because I say it was a hit a few years ago because somebody always looks into this and can instantly pick out their school and if you want to find an inequality in there, I bet you could find one. But, but it goes to show you at least how, how we spend our money. I wanted to stress in there and the main things that I just wanted you to see for future reference is that, and to let you know about some changes is the State Office of Education is actually going to start putting some of this information online. It's a requirement for some federal funds and, and you can see that big line up on top, unallocated to schools. We also had some OFR expenditures. I'm just looking at our general fund that we attributed to the, that we had paid for in, in, out of our general fund. And you can go on down the list of some other programs that don't exactly fall into a specific school location, so they're tough to allocate. And that's what some people like to call that overhead. I, I just, for purposes of this spreadsheet, call it unallocated to schools. Long story short. But I wanted to then attribute that to student numbers because a lot of times they ask, "How much do we spend per school?" And, and that can vary and it does in a school district. And, and you know, when we're responsible over, over the schools that we have responsibility over, it's, it's not a, it's not an equal piece of the pie, if you understand what I'm saying. But I think there's some things that we can point out here that are good. And, and as you can see down at the bottom, when it came to those, of the ninety-four million dollars that we spent last year in our general fund, you know, twenty-four thousand of them, that number I have at the bottom there was unal, was unallocated to the schools. And so of those that we were able to allocate, I wanted to show you an average, and that's that number highlighted in the grand total line. The average of the above schools, it's their average per student cost. Then down below, I wanted to make sure we got an, you know, because of rounding and differences, I wanted to actually calculate from a district-wide. That's unallocated per, or allocated to schools of four thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-four cents per student. And then at the very bottom, you can see we spent, and you'll see that in the audit report when it comes out, we spent over six thousand dollars per student this past year, six thousand five hundred and seventy-four. But the ones that are highlighted, and that's what I want to point out, is, is, is actually a good thing for when we, when we show these to legislatures and to legislators, I should say, and people that we talk to. The ones in yellow, and that's what I want to stress, they're, they're greater than the, than our total per pupil. And, and most of them, if you look at them, are going to be our necessarily existing small schools. And that's actually good to show that we, we are spending that money in, in those schools from a necessarily existing small school perspective because that, that's been a priority and it has been. I think it's, it's a good thing. It helps benefit our district and I wanted you to see how that, that's being spent. Now, there's a few that are in, in green and, and the difference there is they're not above the sixty-five, you know, hundred dollars per student, but they're also above our allocated schools average. And so I just wanted you to see that there's some that fall in that middle ground and that's where IBAPAW happens to come in if you, if you were curious. But that's why I wanted to point those out as well, but.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does the Wendover schools include like their grant money for turnaround or?
Correct, it would, so. It could, it would. This would include all funds, you know, you know, because special ed might be different at one school than another when you're looking at a program. Title one is specifically, all the title one schools should be a little bit higher than schools that aren't title one. And, and so that's why when this is released to the public, it's going to be interesting. I, I don't know how much press it's going to get, what people are going to think about it. But I just wanted you to see our district as a, as a start. Now, just a challenge, and that's more of an accounting challenge, something we need to work on, is that the state, knowing that they're moving to more location-based, I'll be honest with you, sometimes we make large orders, get a large order of textbooks. And instead of allocating that by school, you know, this school got so much textbook, so it's easier for us to put that in the overhead, that unallocated to schools. So there's a lot of expenses that go in there just because, sure, we give them to schools, but it hasn't been a fun thing to break them out. I just wanted to stress, the state's asked us to be more detailed. So in the future, more and more of this unallocated, we're going to do our best to start allocating to schools to get a little more
I think that's a good
little better picture, but
That's a good thing, I think.
And that, this, I just want you to know that that pressure is there, but, but you're right. It's interesting as you look through there, just kind of what we are spending on a, on a per pupil basis, so. Gotcha. Any questions, additional questions on that?
I have a comment. You can see there how expensive it, it is. But to run small schools, you do receive additional funding through necessary existing small schools. But also, I just want to point out that the board has made a commitment to those students who are at risk. I mean, it's obvious that Blue Peak High School is the most expensive school we offer or, you know, the educational experience that we offer. But just the, just the flat dollar amount doesn't tell the whole story. We made a commitment to those kids. We're going to talk a little bit in my report about kids who are at risk and have experienced adversive, you know, stress and situations, chronic stress. And so, anyway, I, I, I mean, you'll see this in any district. Alternate schools and rural schools are more expensive to operate. It's just economies of scale, so.
Thank you. And I, I should have added that this will, my understanding is the state, when they're looking at doing a report by district, will use last year's data, the seventeen data. So unless that gets delayed another year, that's their intent. The last meeting I went to was they're looking at using last year's data, which was, which is what we had here. Okay, the, the second item I had in there, just the second tab in there is, I thought it'd be a good time to show you our bond proceeds and what we spent them on. Now, a good rule of thumb that you're going to see here is, actually, they will ask for, in the, in the legal documents that we sign, a good rule of thumb, I've been told, is to make sure you spend your money within two years. Outside of that, they start worrying about what they call arbitrage and some other things that we've talked about. But the good thing is that two thousand sixteen issue, you can see, and, and the reason that this came into my mind is because we provided where we were at at the end of fiscal year seventeen to the auditors. But I also wanted to put in eighteen year to date because we've also had some expenditures this year from our bond proceeds. And, and as you can see, because of that, the good news is we have spent the two thousand sixteen issue, the thirty-three million plus the premium that was even, even allocated. It just, this is just going with the first in, first out cash basis. The two thousand seventeen issue, you can see, is the one that we're starting to work on as far as a spend down. So I just wanted you to have that report. Pretty quick, nitty gritty, but that's where we're at.
So, Madam President.
Yeah, go ahead.
Under that lark, so it's important to know that the, the sixteen issue essentially was the, the school, Old Mill Elementary and Sterling Elementary, which will open on January second. And the seventeen issue is everything, we've completed the track project. So the track project, Grantsville High School, weight room facility, and Toilla, Toilla Junior High addition for more capacity, and then Willow Elementary expansion addition. So that's, that's what we're working on right now, out of that sixteen minute.
The technology was on the first.
Yeah, and the techno, you're right. The technology was a part of that first one. It also, a little bit of the technology happened through the technology grant as well. So we've done the wiring infrastructure as a part of that, so. Those are the projects that we're tied to, and that's important to us, is that we do exactly what we say we're going to do when we, when we have a, a bond issue passed. We have a list of projects and we, we're going to be able to complete all of those. At the time we did the bond, the Willow expansion wasn't even a part of that. So that's where the discussion about premium came in and what we were going to be able to do with our capital.
Exactly, and that may not be a bad idea for the board to, if, if, if we want to add the Willow expansion to the, given that it wasn't in there, it might be a good idea in a future meeting to approve that as part, you know, as part of the bond proceeds to be spent on that.
Can we maybe just do that, if we make record, maybe do that when we approve? Because we'll have to approve some other things for that, too, maybe all at once or something.
Might be a good idea.
Especially when the architectural drawings come back and, and Mr. West, prior to going out for bid, will, will give a, a anticipated budget at that point in time. So you'll be able to see what the, what the cost estimates are.
Let's do it then.
And the last thing I had to talk about was just some RFPs to keep you in the loop because they could be substantial enough as far as cost that they would need to come to the board for approval, at least that we've discussed internally. One of those is a, I'm putting GPS units on our buses. Currently, they, they don't have them. In order to fully utilize the software we have with Versatrans and some of the technology, the transportation department has asked that we look at issuing an RFP to see what options are out there as far as putting GPS units on the buses. So that's one they're looking at doing. The other one we have on the near, near future radar for RFPs is, is relates to the insurance committee and, and they're looking at a, it's been over five years with, with our contract, with our current broker and, and a good rule of practice is just to issue another RFP. I guess in this case, it's not a proposal, might be more of a request for information, might be an RFI, to see who's interested in, in performing those services, so. Any questions on those or concerns about those?
Thank you, good information.
All right, thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Well, Madam Chair and members of the board, there's a lot of information. I don't, I'm not going to click on them and read them. Two of them were research briefs that came through EAB. We've en, we've enrolled as a part of the superintendent's forum and kind of our next steps in our school improvement process with EAB. It's, it's actually referred to as the Advisory Board. It's in DC. They started with healthcare and then they branched into higher ed and now they're in the K-12 market. And really, it's a research think tank. So I gave you two samples of research white papers. The one was on dual-language immersion and the other one was preventing chronic absenteeism. So we're able to, to ask them to support us with, really, their goal is to take research and to marry that with best practices and, and give us some guidance on implementation. So topics like four-day week, topics like service animals, any topic related to education and how to best implement a program can come through EAB. So it will kind of replace University of Virginia's role as far as turnaround. We don't have any schools that are currently in turnaround. We had Wendover High School was recognized for getting out of priority school status. So we were really happy for that growth. So just to give you an example, and I, I left you some other stuff regarded to, you can see a list of the colleges and universities that they work with. We're talking the top six hundred research institutions, higher ed in, in the nation that they work with. So we're excited. This is their actual first venture into K-12 and, and I'm on that superintendent's leadership forum and we are surveyed about issues that are going on across the country and in our districts. For example, mental health. That's why I included the study on ACEs. There's been a lot of talk and we just, we just previewed the movie Resilience. And last year, we did Paper Tigers. And if you haven't heard of that, that's, that's basically in ninety-five to ninety-seven Kaiser Permanente and pediatricians and some neuropsychologists with Kaiser started noticing and, and re, and did research then that the kids that had more than four of these ten ACEs, and when we talk about ACEs, it stands for adverse childhood experiences. So divorce, separation, parent in jail, substance abuse, physical, sexual abuse, neglect, these kind of problems. The, the movie Paper Tigers highlighted, I think that was two thousand ten, the principal at an alternate school in Walla Walla. And he said, "You know, we're running around trying to write truancy and smoking tickets and kind of punish these students into good behaviors and we know that it doesn't work." Some of the statistics with the ACEs study showed that if you, kids who had four or more on that ACEs study, of those experiences were twenty, twenty percent more likely to have heart problems. They were fifty percent more likely to be suspended. And I can't remember the percentage on those that, that would drop out. When they looked at that over the lifetime of those kids who reported to have those experiences in childhood but were adults, they found that their lifespan was twenty years shorter. The average lifespan for kids that experienced that. And the way they described it is, you know, we all have that fight or flight. If a truck's bearing down on us and we jump out of the way, cortisol pumps into our system and feeds our, you know, muscles with that energy in order to jump out of the, the way of the truck. But kids who are constantly faced with significant stress actually have a structural and functional change in the brain that they can see on MRI scanning. And, and it was just so closely related to other health problems that they felt like, gosh, this is a health crisis that we're ignoring. Now, we see more and more kids coming with mental health issues. The aver, average prevalence rate of childhood and adolescent diagnoses for DSM four are twenty percent. We have sixteen thousand students. What's twenty percent? So that's thirty-six hundred students, right? Or thirty-two hundred? And I wasn't a math major. So we potentially have upwards to thirty-two hundred, whatever you round, whether you round down at the prevalence rate of kids who have some diagnosable mental illness. So it's part of the reason why we got the Safe Schools Grant, part of the reason why we said we're going to have safe schools and climate and mental health and social services is a big issue because if you're, the, the, the kids with ACEs, it's not just one truck. It's every night, they feel like they're, they have to be on guard for when's the next truck going to run over me. And when you're worried and thinking about that, you're not thinking about math facts. You're thinking about, "Where am I going to get my next meal?" You're thinking about, where am I going to get my next meal? Am I going to get abused tonight? Is Dad going to come home or is he going to get arrested because there's been substance abuse? We've got more and more of those kids. I was just at a presentation with Kristy Johnson, who's our homeless liaison. She said we had six hundred and thirty homeless students, students that are classified as homeless. They're either couch surfing or they're in a tent or doubled up with other families. I mean, there's several ways you can qualify for that. So, we really cannot, we don't believe we're the lead agency with regard to social services, but we can't ignore that because it's impacting learning for our students. And so, anyway, I'm just bringing you up to speed. We're actually going to, as opposed to doing Techtoberfest next October, we're going to do PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. We're going to talk about social services, mental health, systems of support for our kids because we want to address and prevent bullying and suicide and help kids to feel connected. It's very interesting when you watch the movie Paper Tigers or when you watch Resilience to see those people that have had and have committed to trauma-informed practice and what chronic stress does to the brain, just the fact that they understand that and they know, like, for example, we used to spend a lot of time writing truancy tickets. And it didn't work, the data suggests. So we've switched to doing more of a, let's send the truancy specialist, one of our Safe School specialists, out into the home and let's see what is preventing attendance as opposed to trying to just police and write tickets. I have some friends that, I don't, but have some friends that have gotten quite a few tickets and just getting a ticket doesn't stop you from continuing the speed, right? Until you, it usually takes more than that ticket. And it wasn't working with kids. And so, we're using the forum at EAB and then we're going to use, we haven't named it yet, but the Techtoberfest training to talk about classroom management, difficult situations. I mean, we've had special ed aides, it's a hard-to-fill position because sometimes they do get bit and/or a kid will have a meltdown and a chair is thrown and vandalism happens, et cetera. And, you know, we try not to do the hands-on, you know, restraint kind of a thing. We're trying to be very humane and positive and preventative, but we're getting kids with more challenging disruptive behaviors at a lower grade level. It's not just secondary schools, it's elementary schools. So, we can no longer afford to ignore that. We've got to have trauma-informed practice. We've got to change the way we look at positive behavior supports and classroom management. So, those are some things that are going on, that we're working on. We had a principals' leadership training today and it was great. We talked about curriculum and PLCs and how that relates and moving the work of the district forward. So, I'm happy to report that. The last thing that I needed, I have the final October first count that you can see that was cleaned up. That's the official October first count and the numbers of students that we have. We really are seeing some growth, especially in the online area. And lastly, I need to solicit possible dates if you are interested as a board in doing a walkthrough of Sterling Elementary prior to the January second first day. So Sterling will open on January second to students and then that evening, because of the holiday, that evening will have the ribbon cutting at 6:00 PM. So, but it will have a day of school, the first day of school will be the second of January. So if you would like to look at the building prior to that, I know some of you have expressed interest. It's ready, we posted online a little video, Marie did a good job doing some
Yeah, it was good.
Panorama view, the sled hill is there, there's grass, all the flooring is down. It really is exciting to see that school coming together.
So could I maybe just ask for all the board members to email Diane like two days that they could go in the next two weeks? And the one with the most wins? Okay, I can do that. Well, then you have to answer when I pick them. Thanksgiving?
When I talked with Steve, he said, "We don't dare close the sled hill. If we have a little bit of wear and tear, we can overseed. It shouldn't be too hard on..."
Probably a good choice.
It shouldn't be too hard on the sod, we'll just have to look at it. And we can overseed if we get any areas where we get... No, it would be our, it would be our job. It's at a slope where we can mow, it's a three-to-one slope, you know. It only bumps down three feet for the one feet out kind of a thing. And so, we're able to get a mower up on that hill, it's not too steep where we have to put in a rope tow at this point in time for the sliders, so. Maybe a high-speed quad, you know, up there. Anyway, it should be okay, we've been, what other questions are you getting, Julia? Yeah, not until January second, it will open for, they have taken down the fencing and they've got signage will go up, they're working on big toys, there's several big toy areas. That cut-out concrete area is one for the playground. So, January second if they can hold off. Of course, as soon as the first snow flies, you know what's going to happen, right?
Do you have other questions, Julia?
Anything else, Julia?
Me too.
When would you like to, and if you can't do it in one group, if you want to do it in two groups, we can accommodate that as well.
Diane and I are going to come up with two dates and send them out.
That's my report, any questions for me?
Thank you. So I have asked for a report to rotate through the area directors' reports, sorry, in advance. But Mark had emailed me and asked, "What are we supposed to talk about?" I'm like, "Whatever you want, but we'll, we can change it as we see fit." But I thought it would be good to just have a check-in, you know, once a quarter from each of you. So, I'm sure it's going to be fantastic.
Fantastic and fast.
Awesome, that's even better.
No, so I know that when we spoke in the work meeting, you kind of said, "Not a lot of stuff that you always get, but maybe something new." So I thought I would share with you what we did as a Grantsville area on October twenty-seventh, which was a teacher workday, the students weren't there. And so I know you've read through this and, but I'll sum up for maybe those that haven't read the packet. Basically, we brought in the four Grantsville schools, the two elementary schools, junior high and high school, Windover and Dougway, we gave them the option to come in and they chose to stay in their buildings at that time. I think that'll change the next time because we've had some good dialogue. But anyhow, we brought those schools together, we divided up all the teachers and gave them topics and said, "Go." And we really wanted them to brainstorm what could be done. We wanted kind of outside-of-the-box thinking on a slew of topics. And so that's the notes you have is what the teachers came up with. And then today, in our leadership, the principals met and we reviewed those items and we came up with a few, we really wanted some things that we can kind of implement really quick. One item is we realized that even though teachers will take Willow and Grantsville Elementary, a lot of them know each other, but maybe not as well as we might think. And so what we're creating first off is basically an area directory of who our first-grade teachers are, who our science teachers are from K-12. So that'll be the first thing that we're creating. So when a teacher has a question, they know who their colleague is in the other school. The other thing that we will be doing is, this was a request from Windover High School specifically, is their teachers need, would like to have the teachers in the valley share their common formative assessments out in Windover. And so we're going to be linking those teachers up, sharing common informative assessments, then they'll be able to compare like data. So we're pretty excited about that. The other thing that we're going to be doing, and this is, this will take some help, we're going to ask Thane and Katie to help us, and I spoke with Thane earlier today, is we're going to create some type of discussion board for our area. This is again largely to help Windover and Dougway teachers that if they have questions, there'll be an area discussion board, they can go on there, post on the discussion board, other teachers will be able to respond back to them. We're not sure exactly how that's going to look, so that'll take us some time to implement. But that's kind of the direction we're going. We also, today I know all teachers or all principals in the district today got a packet that discusses vertical alignment and what standards look like K-12 so as we can start vertically aligning as an area. So, that was kind of our first big area new thing to do. So, any questions you have for me? Oh, one thing that the teachers did say, and I think Angie brought this up today in our meeting, one thing that they wanted was more time. They love being able to meet with their colleagues, they love the conversations, but they wish they would have had more time to discuss these things. And I think that's a positive thing to hear from our teachers. Any questions about this or about anything else in the Grantsville area?
Alan? You're from Grantsville.
Yeah, Alan.
I am a proud cowboy.
I know.
I guess, I guess one that I have is, I mean, this is a fairly sizable document with a number of different suggestions. I'm just wondering about follow-up and follow-through and
Yeah, so I made a point when, after, on the twenty-seventh, when all the teachers were there, I stood up and I said, "Basically, hold us accountable, these are our next steps. We'll be meeting in our November leadership and we will have, we'll start looking for low-hanging fruit." And I did that on purpose because I wanted them to know that we are taking their work serious. And then today in our breakout meeting, I basically said the same thing to our principals. It's now our job to go back to the schools and report what we did today and what are, we have two or three projects we're going to start working on. We need to report back to our teachers so they know that we are following through with some of their suggestions. And so, once we check those off, we'll report back to our teachers and we'll look for some more items that we can work on. Sounds good.
Any other questions? Fantastic and fast, thank you. Sharp survey, and I have Julie Spindler here listed, but I see the whole crew is here for support.
I'm the person. So do you have my PowerPoint, Jim? There is a lot of information. So I attached the survey instrument and also all of the documents that tie what questions were asked for, that makes up all of each risk factor and protective factor and that kind of thing. So, first, we just want to thank you as a board for supporting the Sharp survey. It really gives us so much data, as you know, to be able to write a lot of grants and we've been able to get lots of money in our community for prevention. And so we want to also thank the Health Department, Twilla City Communities that care and Valley Behavioral Health. As you know, we do a census survey in our district. Most districts do not do a census, but we feel like it is really been beneficial for us to be able to get much better data. And honestly, it's easier because we don't have to have teachers say, "Well, I have to only give it to tenth graders and not eleventh graders and I have eleventh graders in my classroom, what do I do with those kids?" So it really, since 2007, we've done a census and it has turned out great. And we are bragged about all over the state because of how we operate, how we run our Sharp survey and what our data is telling us. So we're really happy about the results, I'm really excited to share with you. At the heart of the Sharp, it's really a collaborative effort. Again, we really appreciate the partnerships with our community partners. It's really designed to help reduce the number of surveys that are given. As you know, years and years ago, there were four or five surveys every year given, whether it was the Youth Tobacco Survey or the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, they were all given at different times. And so, years ago, they combined those surveys so that we do it one time every other year. So we really appreciate that. And really, it has been a very successful project in the state of Utah. Again, the Sharp survey has given us a lot of data and not just to the school district, but to our community partners. There's been between ten and eleven million prevention dollars brought into our area in the last ten years because of the data that is gleaned from this. So, we, it's a long list and there's many more things that we could add to that, but it really has been a beneficial thing for our district. So, many people ask if the data is valid because sometimes people are very surprised at what our data looks like based on some of the conversations or the media that they see. And there are validity checks, things like asking students if they are honest when they have taken the survey. There's also, you know, if they report a high level of drug use that really would be impossible to do without killing yourself probably. Then that is, that's, those students' surveys are taken out of the mix. Next? Right, right. Right, and the survey's called the Prevention Needs Assessment and it is given in thirty-five other states throughout our country. So it's not a Utah thing and they really have, it's been a research-based instrument since the nineties. So, I really like to show this as well because what we know is that youth problem behaviors is linked to risk factors. So, the more risk factors students have or kids have, the more likely it is they may participate in these antisocial behaviors that we are really trying to prevent. Substance abuse being high on that list. If a student has many of these risk factors, they are tied to substance use. And we know that substance use, academic performance, behavior in schools are all tied together.
And Julie, you don't just look at protect, or at risk factors, you look at the other side protective factors as well, right?
Yep, it's coming up, yep. So we administered this year five thousand three hundred and thirty-five surveys to our students, grade six through twelve. A hundred and seventeen of those were taken out of the mix because they did not meet one of the validity checks. It's usually about three to five percent, so we're right on track, making five thousand two hundred and eighteen of those surveys that make up this data. And here it is, we are so excited. So, the first is our substance use rates and we show alcohol, marijuana, tobacco, and then prescription drugs. And every single one of our substances has gone down every single year in lifetime and thirty-day use for all of those drugs, including e-cigarettes, which we're one of the only counties in the state that e-cigarette use has dropped. We have seen an increase across the board. Lifetime has stayed about the same, but thirty-day use is what we like to look at because it really gives us a point in time, real good picture of how many students are using on a regular basis. So, also, our lifetime and thirty-day use of alcohol continues to decrease and I'll show you a trend, some trend data in just a minute, but we're really, really happy about what this is telling us with our, with the substances that most of our prevention agencies are targeting their dollars toward. And then, these are all of our other substances and they either stayed the same or decreased. I know that we, in the media and in our state, have focused a lot on heroin and what we know is that is not something that our students are using. We need to make sure that our prevention dollars are focused on those substances that they are starting out using, alcohol, tobacco, marijuana. And it's not that it's not a problem, but what I'm saying is, is that it's a very small percentage. And as you can see, we are at or below the state average in most of those substances as well. And you've, most of you have heard me say that twenty-three years ago, when I came to Twilla County and in nineteen ninety-seven, when we administered our very first piece of our Sharp survey, we, I would go to conferences and they'd say, "Okay, this is ABC School District and they're really high in all of these substances." And I'd sit in the back and I'd be like, "That's us, that's Twilla." But we continue to be right on track with decreasing our usage rates. We really have been touted as one of the premier places for our collaboration and for what we do with our students, not just academically, but behaviorally and with prevention services. So these next three slides are my very favorite. Next. So these next three slides are my very favorite, because it shows longitudinal data from ninety-seven, when we first started surveying our students, to now. And you can see, in fact, I noticed that um our lifetime use now is the same as our thirty-day use was back in ninety-seven. We've made huge gains. And it's, it's awesome. I think it tells a great story. And then the next one is our um cigarette use, lifetime and thirty-day use. And then our next one is marijuana use, thirty-day and lifetime use. And I just. I think it tells its own story. I don't even need to talk about it. So um, the next slide. There's a great big star on there, because we really are the superstar of what we have done with suicide prevention in the state of Utah. Um, if you go to any prevention conference or any suicide prevention or anything like that, they're talking about what Twilla County has done. And from the school district to Communities That Care, to Valley Behavioral Health, we all have collaborated and made this a mission. To talk about suicide prevention, to prevent it among our youth, as well as our adult population. And when we look at the number of suicides combined with all of our populations, they have decreased dramatically. And when we look at depressive symptoms and suicidality with our students, we're the only county, the only school district in the state of Utah. Who has had a decrease in the last two years. So, huge. Yeah. We're very, very excited and happy about that. So this, this chart shows those students who identified as using um alcohol, tobacco and marijuana, or cigarettes and marijuana in the last thirty days. And what they are saying they need in terms of mental health treatment. And what this tells us is that those students who are using are saying that they also are in need of mental health treatment. And thank goodness for our uh School Climate Transformation Grant. We have been able to provide a lot of mental health services to kids. And to families and um about two hundred last school year. So we're really excited about being able to, to do that for, for our kids, but we also know that preventing substance use. Um, you know, we have kids who need, they're self-medicating. Because maybe they aren't able to get those treatments. And so what are some of the things that we can put in place as a school district? That we already have and to sustain those things that um, that are important for our students to be able to succeed. These next, this next slide is our risk factor profile. And, you know, we have gone up a little bit in certain areas. We've gone down in certain areas. It shows us that we still have work to do, but we've made gains and we have um done great things with, with the data. And, and the money and the dollars and the focus with programming that we've done in our schools and in our community. The, the triangle is what they call the Bach Harrison norm. And basically Bach Harrison is our survey administrator. And they administer this in thirty-five different states, and they take the averages of those thirty-five states to make a national average. So you can see that we're well below the national average. We still have work to do um within our state, but we have made great gains with that. Um, we do want to kind of focus a little bit on our sixth and eighth grade this year. They have gone up in risk factors. Um, so those, that's, those are some grades that we're going to kind of look at and see what we are going to do. And I'll, I'll explain what we've done with principals with this also. Uh, the next is our protective factor profile, and we want protective factors to go up, things that protect our kids. Um, and you can see that we are doing a good job. We have room to grow. And, and way, things that we can definitely focus on. So these are students who have ident- also identified as using substances in the last thirty days and what they say their academic grades are. And um, they're Cs, Ds, Fs, mostly. So we know that preventing substance use will also increase academic, academic performance. Um, a piece of, uh, another piece that we can get from this Sharp survey, we added some questions onto the Sharp survey. Um, with some of our agencies. One of those questions was about cellphone use. And um whether or not they were talking to their parents, whether their parents had talked to them about proper use. And put limits on those. Um, so this is just a piece of data that, that I wanted to share, just, you know, that. It's not just about substances. It's not just about risk and protective factors, but we also had law enforcement ask a question about. Um, how they feel about law enforcement and how, if they feel like they are safer because law, of their law enforcement agencies. Because they wanted to know how students are feeling about those things. So um. So those are some other things that we can do. So some of the things that we um are going to do with our results, again, the positive results. We're going to keep capitalizing on those and keep moving in the right direction. Some of the negative, uh, we definitely want to look at some of. Focus our attention and some of our dollars as a community. Uh, one thing that we did do this year is we gave, and we have done this in the past with principals, given them their own profile report for their own school. But this year, we also did kind of what we called a data dig and had them identify their own risk factors in their own schools. And their protective factors and what substances, what that looked like in their own building. So that they could take that back to their school and really look at and target and focus where, where some of their ideas. And, and some of their um programming is going to be in their future. So. So any questions?
Go ahead.
I just, not a question, but just a shout-out to Twilla City. Uh, Mayor-elect Winn is here and uh Councilmember Wardle is here. And we want you to know how much we appreciate Communities That Care. Uh, they were just at our meeting this morning. And uh, board members probably don't know this, because we haven't had a chance to brief you, but. Uh, our Twilla City Schools were just pre- presented with a five hundred dollar check each school for uh, for these ongoing efforts. I, I, it matters to the current mayor. I know it will matter to uh the mayor-elect. And the city council will continue to support that. They do uh mayors uh, a lot. Um, not only great support do we get from uh law enforcement, Chief Kirby was here and our SROs, but the. But I think it matters and it shows to the whole council, every single mem- member on the council. And we appreciate it, because uh, not only, I mean, they put, they walk the talk and they put dollars there and they support us in those programs. Uh, they have uh Heidi who works with Communities That Care and then um.
Sandy Medina.
Yeah. Medina that works um with um First T and.
She does, she's the school programs coordinator, so she does a lot with.
Program coordinator.
Yeah.
For the schools. And so Second Step Curriculum and all of that, all, all those efforts. I mean, we couldn't do it without city partnerships, so.
Definitely.
And so we, we definitely want to recognize that and, and thank those, those individuals.
Definitely. Thank you.
It's good stuff. It's good information.
Good.
It's interesting.
All right. Thank you.
Julie.
Thanks, Julie.
Uh, Benjamin Alver from Clark Johnson Junior High, teacher fellowship program. Woohoo.
Woohoo. Um, yeah, if you'll put that PowerPoint up for me, Jim, that'd be great. Um, Superintendent asked me to come and talk about this uh fellowship program. Um, it's a joint program between the National State Teachers of the Year and a group called Hope Street Group out of California. Um, Hope Street Group, uh, they have programs in several different areas, not just education. Education is part of it. And it's about um ground-up leadership, leadership from below. So the teachers program, uh, this is the first year of the Teaching Fellows Program in our state. And I was, I'm going to use the word lucky enough to be chosen as one of the Teacher Fellows, if you go to the next slide. Um, so what they did as a program is they went to the USBE. And they said, we want to provide teacher voice. What do you want to know? What do you want to know from teachers? And so we're combining with USBE and other people to. Uh, I say, my job is to amplify teacher voice, to go out there and amplify it across the state. If you would go to the next slide. Um, and so we do this in, in many ways. We had, I held some focus groups in the district. Um, we did a huge data collection um on the topic that they wanted us to focus on, which is teacher leadership. Um, social media. I am not a big social media guy.
Saw it on Twitter.
Yeah. So they forced me to be a social media guy. So I have a Twitter and, you know, it kind of like, I have new people following me every week that kind of, you know, it was. You know, it was intimidating enough when Superintendent Rogers followed me and the other week. Uh, the Utah Senate followed me and I'm like, why do you care what I'm saying on? So i- it's a little intimidating, but it does get out there. We have every Wednesday night at eight o'clock. On Twitter, there is Utah Ed Chat, which focuses on a different thing every week. And uh, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we had the first one sponsored by our fellowship group. And it set records for Utah Ed Chat, and we were trending in the state of Utah, which might mean something to somebody, but. It's stuff that I was told to say, so I think it's impressive to somebody that knows the Twitterverse better than me.
Ben, there's no need to apologize. That's the only way I could get new friends too and followers, but. Marie made me do Twitter, so.
Nothing wrong with Twitter.
If it, if it, if it helps.
Yeah. Um, so we're doing these surveys. We'll be meeting uh in person. I may come to you again with uh things in person, and we'll be meeting with local politicians and stakeholders. We'll be at Educator Day on the Hill uh in February. Um, if you could go to the next slide. Um, so our focus is uh teachers leading, leading without leaving the classroom. Because there's a, there's a large group of teachers with no ambition to leave the classroom. But that doesn't mean we don't have ambition, right? And, and teaching is seen as kind of a dead-end job, right? You get in the classroom and unless you want to go into administration, there's not anywhere really to go. And so, so we're here to, to say there, there is somewhere to go. And to try to provide more avenues. And I'll, I'll tell you, being in this group has inspired me. Inspired me to be a better teacher. Uh, it's a lot of work. This past weekend, I was excited, was the first weekend I hadn't had a PD thing to go to. Two days in a row, I got to sleep in past seven. I was very excited. But it's also very inspiring, knowing that there's other teachers out there that are in the same boat you are, that are ambitious. And we just want to look at more ways to provide teacher leadership roles. Because I think that that's a way that uh our teachers can be supported, can feel better about their jobs. Uh, uh, you know, we appreciate the money and the money is always a big factor, but nobody's in this job for the money. Uh, and this is just another way we can feel rewarded. Uh, could you go to the next slide? So there's fellowship groups all over the place. Just last week, I was on a uh. Webinar with uh the nation, the North Carolina Fellows. We had people come out from Hawaii. I suggested it was better to send us all to Hawaii than for them to come out, but uh they did that. So it's, it's, it's just building relationships across the state, understanding that. You know, the same problems that we have as teachers in Utah are the problems that they have in, you know, in North Carolina. And, you know, it was amazing on that webinar how many of us were sitting in our classrooms at eight o'clock at night, seven o'clock at night. Doing work from our classrooms, having this meeting from our classrooms, because we hadn't made it home yet. One more slide. So here are the fellows. Um, I am the sole representative from Twilla County. Uh, there's twenty in our fellowship group. Um, and they're all amazing. You know, I, I honestly, every time I go to a meeting, think, what am I doing with these amazing people? Um, but all these people are amazing and it's a good group of people um to be associated with. And, and I'm glad I am associated with them. Next slide. Okay, so this is just talking about some of the impact that we're making, the support we're getting. Uh, the, the impact we're, we're looking to make and we've made so far. Um, we're publishing, people from our cohort are publishing all over the place. I'm part of the editorial board. So I've been doing a, a lot of reviews on these articles that are being published. One of the teachers in our cohort, that's a teacher in Granite School District, is also a Black Hawk pilot. So we got a lot of media out of her with the uh Veterans Day being up. I think that's like, how cool is it to have your history teacher be a Black Hawk pilot? She's amazing. Um, so we are making an impact out there and we appreciate that. Next slide. Um, so like I said, the topic of our, our survey this year was teacher leadership roles. And we were able to talk to fifty, uh, have fifty focus groups, talk to two hundred people in person. The focus group is a little different than the survey, being that the questions were the same. But the focus group allows the teachers to feed off of each other. And uh, I think that extends the conversation. Um, eighteen hundred teachers across the state took our survey. We were able to get all forty-one school districts. It was not an easy thing to do. I was, you know, reaching out to people to get Tintic and South Summit. And, you know, dig deep in your um colleagues, with your colleagues to find, hey, didn't you go to school with somebody that's at South Summit? Can we talk to them? You know, and.
Ben, we had pretty good response, didn't we?
And we had a great response. So um, last slide, we'll show our response. So we are, Twilla is one of the, the dark purple there. Um, if you did, don't count the charter schools as one district, we were the third district represented. Uh, a hundred and fifty-three responses from our school district. And that's thanks to uh Superintendent Rogers letting me bend everybody's ear and supporting me on this. Um, but, so we will have, when the final report comes out, you know, I don't know the numbers of the percentage of. Teachers in the state of Utah that we have, but I would think that we would be very well-represented. Much higher than our percentage says uh in the state of Utah. So I just wanted to again, uh, show my appreciation for the superintendent for uh supporting me in this. And I, I think this is a good project and I'll probably be talking to you again about other things. Um, be happy to answer any questions you have or.
I think we appreciate your efforts. I mean, it's a good project and.
Interesting.
I, I would tell you.
I agree.
It's a lot more productive. Uh, and uh, and Benjamin has, Mr. Alver has volunteered his time and spends a lot of time at it. But we know that teacher voice is important, not just on the items that they're not satisfied with. I mean, we've got to get beyond just complaining and we're getting to solutions. And that's what this is about. So we fully support this and other teachers that are involved in these kind of professional development efforts.
How do you think it's, um, how do you think it's helped you become, or as far as teaching or being a better teacher? What, what, what perspective have you?
Well, I, I think it just focuses me on what I'm doing, lets me make connections. See that there's other people out there. Sometimes you feel all alone um in, in what you're doing. And just to have other voices out there to share what you're doing and support you in what you're doing. Um, especially, I'm, I'm a transplant to Twilla County. I have no roots here. You know, a relative newcomer. I've been here. This is my sixth year now here. Um, and, and so sometimes, you know, I, I have to strive to find that support. And, and this has definitely provided that for me.
Do your students know that you're involved in this?
I don't know that they do. Um, I haven't really talked about it. I, I'm not the guy that puts stuff forward in the media. And, you know, puts myself forward a lot, but uh, you know.
You just challenged me to come to your class and tell your students what you're doing.
Maybe it'll inspire one of them to go into teaching or more.
Sure.
Sure.
Take the time to, it's not bragging.
That's right.
Take the time to, to. Take the time to, it's not bragging. Take the time to, to teach kids. How important their teachers are in the grand scheme of education. This is still the greatest profession. And uh, the greatest discovery, American discovery, public education. The first country that offered that to the masses, a, a quality education. So it's, it's a cornerstone of our democracy and. It's something to be proud of, being a teacher, so take the time to let them know.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll be back when we get our full report and I'll give you the information from that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for hanging out. Okay, six point six economic development parameters. Um, I do appreciate the Mr. Sant, Mr. Councilman Wardle. That's a, that's kind of a tongue twister. And Councilwoman Winn being here for question and answers. Um, I guess we could start out with um, the superintendent and myself and Lark.
Bring you up to speed, Randy. And, and we had a great meeting with Tooele City and economic development. Um, as you know, we're a, we're a big part of that. When, when folks are looking at coming to our area, they look at not only the business. Uh, climate and the, in, in the city climate and this beautiful area, they look at education and, and, and healthcare, et cetera. So we're all in this together really and we, we sink or swim together, so to speak. And uh, and we appreciated uh, uh, Mr. Sant coming. Randy, at this point in time, I've shared with them the minutes from our meeting. And I would say, uh, uh, Councilman Wardle was there as well as uh, the new chair of the Economic Development. Committee or the RDA, uh, uh, Councilman Pratt, he was there as well. And we had a great discussion. Uh, Marissa was there, uh, Ed Dalton was there, myself and Lark. And um, good discussion about parameters around economic development. So. Uh, Randy, I've shared that with them, the matrix that you shared with us. They've also seen the notices that you provided uh regarding the um. December sixth meeting and uh, and then they've seen. The emails back and forth from us as we were talking about different things and different needs from the district as well as the cities. So that's. Where they're at. They were able to see that. It's quite a bit of information and uh, and I'm just assuming that they'll have questions and comments and. Concerns that perhaps instead of going through me, Randy and, and Scott, it would be easier to. To have you field some of those questions. So that's, that's where we're at in the process. Uh.
Uh, you can sit up there. I, I want, I just wanna go on record also saying, I appreciated the meeting. I think it's good to be, have collaboration and. And talk to each other rather than about each other. It's always better. Um, and the school board, you know, you, you've been here in the past. We had some good discussion um, in the past. The school board is not a big fan of RDAs. We'll just go on record as saying. We are not opposed to economic development for sure, because that's important. We live in a community. But RDAs do not benefit us. We're, our tax, the way we receive our taxes and our tax structure is different than the city. As, as you guys know, so we get our taxes from property tax and when we defer our property tax, it's. A difficult pill to swallow. I, I think I'm speaking, after discussing with the board, I think I'm speaking for the board and you guys can clarify if you'd like. Um. So I, you know, I, I do wanna go on record to say that, you know, we, we raise taxes, it seems like all the time and it's hard to raise taxes and then give away taxes. And, but that being said, we do realize that we need to be good community partners, but it has to be mutually beneficial. In, in some way. So that's, we're happy to, I guess, talk about some parameters so that we can find out, find some ways that that can happen. Rather than sometimes, you know, last time, some last minute things or something that we have a hard time with or you have a hard time with or whatever. So hopefully, you know, we can move forward on a more positive note and find some common ground. You know, go, moving forward. So we appreciate you being here.
I appreciate being here and I, and I think in that, that vein, um, it's one of the reasons why uh, the uh. Economic development, well particularly Tooele City, has adopted what we think is kind of a parameter, if you will, going forward for. Tax increment participation, because I, I, I mean, I have been doing this for a long time and I have been trying to argue with the legislature. That there could be a different way of doing this. Uh, Texas is the model I love and what Texas does is they allow. A sales tax to be used for economic development. I'd love to see that happen in the state of Utah. I'd rather have a sales tax to do this, but unfortunately legislature isn't interested in raising sales tax for economic development. So unfortunately for us in the state of Utah, the only thing we have is we have the tax increment financing. And, and of course, what we wanna do is we wanna be better partners. Now, I'm here to talk with Tooele City, not putting on that county economic development hat. But what I do wanna say is that Tooele City has created one redevelopment project area. Well, they've had two. One is Sunset. The downtown is no longer redevelopment project area. It hasn't been since two thousand seven, I think, or, no, I'm, I'm sorry, two thousand ten. Uh, that one is back on the tax rolls. The one that we have is the one that you are setting in. The Utah Industrial Project Area that was created back in nineteen ninety-four is when we started that conversation. And it was officially created with first year of taking increment was in nineteen ninety-nine. And when we set that one up, we came in and, and made an agreement with all of the taxing entities. Uh, based upon the base review study and other, other things we did, that there would be so much increment we'd need to collect. And then when we got to that point, we wouldn't collect it anymore. That number was three million. Today, we collect about two point three million in that project area and there's still a lot of growth to happen in this area, as you can see. There's still a lot of vacant ground and there's still opportunity for, for that to happen. So for Tooele City's case, we have one project area. Those other project areas, many of those were created by the county. And when I came involved in two thousand, I guess it was probably fifteen and then sixteen. Uh, helping with county economic development, one of the things I saw is I saw ninety-five percent of the increment was being collected. To go to a project and I was, I was stunned. By that, because I think that that's excessive. And so the one thing that happened, the Purple Deal, was in that project area where ninety-five percent was taken. And we cut that back because frankly, it wasn't necessary to do something that, at that large. So I went to Tooele City and asked that maybe the thing to do this would be put a tier and put some parameters in place. For the use of the increment and you saw that, those, those different tiers in the handout. Uh, basically, our position is for economic developments and creating jobs. That's what's important to us. And it's capital investment, which will be important to you too, because as I've said before. If we were to take Cabela's, which has a value of thirty-eight million dollars, that's four hundred houses. And I would wonder if you would prefer to have four hundred houses or one Cabela's. I think you'd prefer a Cabela's to get the same amount of assessed valuation. And, and so our position is we want the jobs, we want the capital investment, cause the capital invests, helps all of us. But sometimes we have to offer incentives. So what I tried to do is put a, at least a parameter that says. That if we don't get anybody investing anything less than five million, we're not even gonna talk to them about anything. But if it's five to nine. And that's usually a little mom and pop shop, very small. Uh, I have a group that came out of Idaho that's opening up a facility that's a. Five million dollar investment, wants something and I basically told them, you're not gonna get it. And then we go for a ten to fifteen, which is a tier two, which is fifty percent the increment for ten years. Then a tier three, which would be up to sixty percent the increment for fifteen. And then a tier four, which would be basically negotiated. And that would be the great big ones that come in here that we would need to sit down and have conversation with everybody about participating. We also want them to pay a decent wage and so we put in there a hundred and ten percent of the county. Uh, average, which would make the jobs right around thirty-nine thousand to forty-two thousand dollars. So that's what we're looking at. Now, as we talked in our economic development, this is our, kind of what we set as a parameter, but what I've suggested. Uh, to the superintendent and the board president was, maybe you could develop a box that works for you. And, and it might be something that then we can look at, that we can fit in, or maybe it's better to come in and say, hey. What we'd rather do is we'd rather you just bring every project to us. Talk about it and let us decide on those parameters. I, I think we could do this a number of ways. Um, but we at least have set this as a guideline for us. So that when we do sit down to a company, we try to set an expectation that there'll be no more than this. Uh, it's the best that we can do and it's what we're looking at doing. Uh, like I said, that tier four in my mind would be one that we would come back and have to sit down and probably do the negotiation. And right now, we've had an interest from a company in that tier four. Uh, it's preliminary, but uh, one of the things that we decided to do for better communication with all of us. Is the superintendent and I are gonna meet monthly and we're gonna have these conversations. About economic development and different things that we've done, so that we're, we're trying to be better partners with everybody on this. So this is a tier. Um, there are three redevelopment projects that Tooele City is looking at creating. Um, one of them, there's only one that we need to come to you and ask you to, to consider participating with us in a budget. The other two, we're getting them in place, because we want them in place to be ready when something happens. And let me just briefly outline those for you quickly. One is the Tooele Commercial Business Park, which is the property that surrounds the TTC and the CLC. There are two hundred and sixty acres there. It is owned by the Redevelopment Agency of Tooele. Uh, we've been successful in getting money from the legislature and grants to put most of the infrastructure in there. So as we outlined, we think our box for that project area would be no more than fifty percent increment. And we wouldn't go any longer than probably a twelve year time and it would probably have a cap of maybe between. Three and five million dollars of increment, because what it would be used for is just to finish out some of that infrastructure. What we've, what we'd also like to do, because we're going to sell that property and the reason we can ask for last increment. Is because the sale can also be an incentive to help with the company. Um, is we would like to uh, offer as a help, way to help. We'd like to offer that for every property, acre of property you sell, we'll give one thousand dollars. To the, either the Education Foundation or to uh, the school district to, to help with some of the costs. That you would see in there. We've also talked about the fact, the superintendent mentioned that meeting. That you may need the need for a couple of acres of additional property around the CLC. We'd like to work to try to get that for you at no cost. Uh, the city owns that property across the street. We've given USU fifty acres in there for their campus. And we think we can work to do that. So the idea is, is try to find ways within the project areas that we're creating to maybe come back and be of assistance to you. Uh, in my meeting with Mr. Dalton, uh, that I had after the meeting with the superintendent. Uh, we talked a little bit about the needs of the Education Foundation. And we think that maybe there might be a need for some of that money even upfront. Well, we have a little fund balance that's come from the sale of property that we've done. That uh, I indicated that I'd be happy to go back and have a conversation with my board. And see if there's a way we could maybe upfront some of that now. To help with some of the goals that the Education Foundation is, has been looking at. That might be a way of getting some funding to help that. That project area, I don't have a budget. I'm not asking you to approve a budget. We're only creating the project area, but that project area doesn't have any teeth. It can't collect any money until you agree to participate in that one. The other one that we're not putting a budget for is down on the west end of one thousand west by Bolander, for those of the, or on one thousand north. Just before you get to SR one twelve out here, where Bolander's at. There's about three hundred and fifty acres of property in there that we would like to put in for another redevelopment project area. The property owner in that area has agreed to participate in this by putting up at least a million dollars for the infrastructure. Our budget indicated that we need about maybe three and a half to four million to build that infrastructure out. So again, the increment would be used to do that infrastructure and again, the same parameters. We'd look at a fifty fifty split. And we'd look at a period of between twelve and fifteen years for that, depending on if it's one company, two companies or three companies. Uh, there's been a lot of interest in that area because of its location, uh, both to this area and to uh, the SR one twelve. The one that we need to have immediate assistance on and the one that we would like to present to you for participation. And the way you, we do this is we would obviously do it through an interlocal agreement. Is uh, we're trying to get in downtown Tooele, a significant commercial development. We're trying to bring in retailers that the people really would like to have. The redevelopment owns thirty-one acres, right there on one thousand north. It's where Wendy's is at. It's the property that surrounds that next to Denny's. That's thirty-one acres of property and what we would like to do is we'd like to put that into a redevelopment project area, a community reinvestment area. And what we'd like to do is we'd like to collect only the tax increment. That is proposed to be a mixed use project, so it would be residential and commercial. But all we want to do is come and ask your participation on the commercial only. We do not want any increment off of the residential, because that residential impacts you as a district. And we want you to have all of that money from that area. Uh, and what we would like to do is to get to the point where we need to be, we're currently working with a development group. We're currently looking at running numbers. We believe that what we need is about two and a half million. So the cap on that would be two and a half million of increment. It falls within the tier three, because the investment is gonna be about thirty million, well, little less than that. It'll be about twenty-eight million dollars. Of capital investment. And so we would come in and ask the parameters be sixty percent of the tax increment. Off of the commercial only, for a period up to fifteen years or a cap of two point five million. Now, if it makes sense to do something different than those parameters, we're willing, that, that's your choice. If it's better to get it back quicker than sooner, maybe we could talk about a bigger percentage. But that is the one project area that we would like to get a budget in place. And then go through the interlocal agreement process of having you participate on. So that's the information on those three redevelopment project areas. Uh, I will say that we did have a great meeting and that meeting has, was long overdue and I appreciate the superintendent. Uh, accommodating us and, and, and uh, the uh, board president being there. Uh, in that meeting, you saw the, the minutes of that. I think we made some commitments that we want to be better partners. Uh, I got an email today from the superintendent regarding the, uh, is it the Harrison Elementary School that you're, Harris Elementary? That you're trying to sell and that you have an interest in doing a bus barn out here. Well, after our meeting, I've talked to the property owners in this property. I've got some more information. I'll give you the actual map, but they own thirty-seven acres just on the other side of this building. And that thirty-seven acres has got some sewer easements running through it, so it's very difficult to build a building on it. But put an asphalt parking on it and then figuring out where you might need your bus barns or whatever it is, we can do that. And they're willing to negotiate with, with us and, and buy that property for, for, for you, for your bus barn. Um, I think there's a deal there. I think we can even make it more favorable. Um, your current bus barn is next to the city's Public Works Department. And I think the city would love to have that property if you were to vacate it. And so maybe we can sit down and talk a way where perhaps the redevelopment agency, because this isn't an RDA project area. Can help work out a deal and come up with a way to maybe where the RDA could buy the property. And then we could look at doing a trade and if there's a little difference in that trade, maybe that'd be the cash difference that would happen. So I think there's a way to do things and we wanna try to do things that benefit you as well as us. Because we know, we're asking for a piece of your pie. There's no question about that. And that's difficult to give up. You need the revenue and we need the economic development. And so I think what our goal was is after this meeting that we had on the twenty-seventh. Is we wanna try to look at better ways of being better partners. And uh, talk about ways that we can, we can assist the school district with that tax increment. Um, Mr. Dalton asked, uh, as we were talking about the needs of the Education Foundation. It was suggested that maybe a way the RDA could possibly help. Is maybe there's a way we could take some of the increment that we have. And uh, match maybe your contribution that you make to the Education Foundation on a yearly basis. Now, that's a budget item I have to go back to my RD, RDA board and talk about. But it's certainly something that, uh, you have two of the members of the uh, RDA here tonight. And they've been open to say, let's have that conversation. And see what there is that we can maybe do to help. We wanna do a yearly strategic planning session with you, because I think we need to know what your goals are. And how we can maybe play a role in those goals and you need to know what our goals are. And we think if we do a yearly planning session, monthly meetings with the superintendent, myself, and then a quarterly update meeting with the board. At least we're doing a much better job of communicating. And those are some of the things that, again, I won't go through all of the minutes. You've got them. And those are some of the things that, again, I won't go through all of the minutes. You've got them. You can read what we discussed. But that's what we talked about. So I guess the main thing being here tonight is to outline those parameters for that one redevelopment project area that we need to have some assistance on, that we'd like to come in and prepare an interlocal agreement and have you act on it in the very near future.
Okay, one thing we have discussed is, you know, as we talked a little bit about setting some parameters is we feel, well, I don't know how much work it'll take to come up with some parameters, but we feel like even if we have some parameters, we would still want to, that's not necessarily a set in stone thing. We would still want to approve each thing. So maybe we could come up with some guidelines for the superintendent to use in monthly meetings, but we would still want to visit each project as it came up.
Each project area you need.
Yep, we're good with everything.
So maybe have the parameters at least gives us a start to fill as an outline and then come back to you and ask you individually on every, each project area you did. Okay, that's perfectly doable.
Am I speaking out of turn?
No.
What would have to approve it formally?
Yeah, you would have to prove it formally by an interlocal agreement. In an interlocal agreement, you have to adopt them by interlocal agreement. That is required in the statute.
So that's one thing.
Can I talk about my heartburn?
Kathy, you can.
Okay. I've been in this system for thirty-three, thirty-four years and I've never been a fan of this program. First off, we go out and we beg the people to vote for taxes and give us a tax raise. That's how we run the schools and our business isn't economic development. Our part, our business is educating children and students and citizens. So we give you the money and one of these citizens say, we just give you this tax degrees, now you've gone out and give it away. How do I explain that to the public that's voting for us to have money? Because through the years, I haven't seen us, that RDA give us back a whole lot of money. We've lost more money than we ever got back or even broke even in my experience.
Knowing that it's not all this city.
And it's not all the city and it's not all that. That's just been my experience with RDA and I want to be honest and upfront about my feelings.
I have to tell you.
You know I'm honest and gonna say.
Kathy, I know you very well. In fact, I sat there and said, thought I taught four of your children. I taught one of you in school and one of you take care of my health so I could die if you don't like me tonight. And Kathy, you can really dress me down well. If I can show you two things, and I think part of it is not always tangible from an RDA side. We've been able through the city and the school district's partnerships to do a few things that really have returned money to the school district. For instance, the Settlement Canyon Elementary Joint Partnership on the park there. Saved the school district a couple of million dollars because you didn't have to go up in building and you didn't have to build a place for kids to go and recreate. The partnerships that we have had in terms of the pool, baseball fields, softball fields that we continue to talk about have given millions of dollars back, literally millions. I think one of the most significant partnerships we've had and Lieutenant Governor Bell, then Lieutenant Governor Bell, lauded our efforts in this and I think it was before all but Julia, you were on the board at this point, is when the CLC was built, that that land came from RDA land. It was sold at an extreme, at a discounted cost or donated. It allowed for the kids to come back to the school district here to be educated and not bust into Salt Lake. Now, if I can add just a couple of other things, I think that the discussion we had was not only long overdue, but I think that as a board, I think you feel burned on RDAs. That's my perception. I think that there's been a couple of agreements that have burned you. They've not been made by Twilla City though. Twilla City, we've really tried to keep an agreement with you that has limited your exposure. And when we say limit, that's a relative term, but we've never had a ninety percent increment given out. We've tried to keep it to fifty or sixty percent and that is our commitment. And that through that process, that if we can find other ways to give back to the school district based upon your investment, that's exactly what we want, whether it's through TEF, whether it's through how do we help go and acquire land through an RDA for a new school that allows you to do some things to pass increment back to you. Those are things that we hope to accomplish. I have no doubt you feel burnt. I've heard that very clearly. I also feel that I hope and I don't want to overspeak for our board, but we really have tried to partner in the most creative manners. Whether, and we realize education is the smokestack for the twenty-first century. We get it. K through master's degrees is how it has to be done. And the more that we can bring property tax increment in that is non-household, thirty-eight million dollars for instance, versus four hundred homes, it helps you. But it requires an investment on our part to do that.
Let's just build new schools.
Helps you build, helps you build new schools.
Get a little more.
Well, I think we're all there, but I hope that we are trying to take a situation that's difficult and come out with the best possible outcome. So I hope that's helpful. I know that the communication side hasn't been there and I think we have a responsibility. I think sometimes in the last five or six months, the communication's been difficult at best.
Not only do I think it hasn't been between the two organizations, I don't think it's been to the public. So the public in whole does not understand why we're giving away money and that's really an important factor.
And I think on the flip side, they ask why is a city contributing to education, which usually isn't our job? And we feel the same way, that we have to educate. There are partnerships that have to be made to maximize the tax dollar. And this is one of those partnerships, we believe, and hopefully that you will continue to see as a value to you that in, at least in Twilla City, we are trying our hardest to make sure that money is returned back to the district, not only fast, but that it increases quickly over time, so.
Julia, I see you pushing your microphone button.
So I just.
It's on. Oh, you turned it off.
Go on.
There, it's on.
Okay. So Marisa was saying that you were possibly going to give us some kind of analysis in terms of what the tax would possibly. So for us to come up with some parameters and see what.
Right. What I wanted to do was I wasn't sure if we were going to go with my recommended budget to you and then I can give you that, or if you had some other parameters that you would kind of like me to look at. I mean, I can do, I've got a spreadsheet already done. The Excel worksheet is already done that shows the different increments, that shows what you've got under the sixty.
Of the sixty?
Of the sixty, forty, and it also shows how long that is. And I think it comes in a little less than fifteen years. Don't hold me to it. I wasn't a math major either. But I think it might even come in, pays it off in about twelve and a half years because of the split. And the one thing I do want to make very clear that under RDA law, you just passed a leeway taxes, is it correct, if I'm correct? We're not entitled to any increased tax that you would have. So we're talking about the two thousand sixteen certified tax rate levy. So if that went up, that automatically goes to you even on the commercial piece of property, unless we ask you to include that in the interlocal agreement. And we're not, we're not asking for that. We're just, we've just got the two sixteen is the certified tax rate I've used in the spreadsheet. So I've got that done. I can send that to the superintendent this week so he can have that. And you can look at that and if you want to come back, we can come in with an interlocal agreement based on those terms for this project area, have that ready for you to act on in your December meeting if appropriate. I think we could wait until January to get this done. Obviously, we'd like to get it as soon as we can, but we could wait until January if we had to give you plenty of time to look at that. And if he gave me a call and said, would you run it at seventy-five percent in nine years? It's an easy change to do on Excel worksheets, so we can have that ready for you to do. I didn't send that out because I thought we should have this conversation first before we actually put that budget together for you to look at.
I would like to see that.
I would too.
We have it ready for you and it's done at the sixty percent, two point five million dollar cap and a maximum time of fifteen years. So it's whichever comes first, the cap or the years, and it's only on the commercial.
Scott first and then Carol? Oh, Carol first and then Scott.
This is, I don't know. I, I've been on the board for ten years and I appreciate what Marisa said that honestly, I just think that the pulse of the board is that we just haven't had good experiences with RDAs, even though I do appreciate and remember the CLC partnership and that was great. I think, and I can say maybe I think we're all feeling this, like we're darned if we do and we're darned if we don't because as Kathy said and as we spoke a little bit earlier as a board, you know, we just barely passed this levy, we hope, hundred thirty-seven votes.
It was more than that now.
Okay, sorry, I haven't seen finals, but we're gonna. I think our taxpayers sent a really loud message, even though we did get the support, but they're, it's hard. It's a hard pill to swallow when we're asking for taxes and yet going back and saying, just kidding, now we're gonna give somebody a tax break. And I mentioned to the board earlier that I hear a lot from small business owners and myself being one, it's the small business owners that keep getting hit and they say, nobody gave me a tax break for coming in to do work and work in Twilla County or own a business in Twilla City or, nobody's giving them tax incentives to be here and they're, they're a big part of our community and we need small businesses. That's, that's the United States of America. Thank goodness we have those abilities. So where I come, where I'm saying is we're darned if we do and we're darned if we don't is, you know, if we don't do it, we come, it comes across that we're not playing nice in the sandbox and we're not willing to be partners and we're not willing to work together. And certainly that's not the message we want to send at all. We recognize that we need to play together and work together and, but we also recognize that it's one entity. You know, you're, this is Twilla City coming to us, but now we may have Mayor Marshall coming and then we're going to have people from Twilla County coming to us and we have to as a board collectively decide if we do want to have parameters for one and make sure that those parameters are the same for everybody. You know, that we, that we don't want, you know, that we want to make it clear to everybody that we want to work with. But I just think it's a really, I struggle with it. It's no secret and I don't think it's any secret to anybody here and as we all spoke, I think we all do. It's a really hard pill to swallow to, and quite frankly, in a lot of situations and where you feel like we're giving a tax break when quite frankly, we think that these businesses, we're gonna come here anyway. And are we really doing any favors? Because we still have to educate all those kids and build schools and pay our teachers more and yet we don't really get any incentive, we don't really get any, anything that helps us to do that when we give these tax breaks. And so I'm just saying that, you know, I appreciated the conversations and the comments from the other board members and on public record, making it clear that I'm not really sure personally, as one of seven, that I have a hard time supporting it, but I'm open. I mean, I'm willing to listen like all of us and get more information and I think that's what we need to do. We're in the education business like Kathy said and we're not in the economic development business. That's your job. So I'm struggling with this, especially in light of the fact that we just had to raise taxes and that's a tough thing for our patrons.
Maybe I can just, could I make a couple of comments to what she said? First of all, we are asking both Grantsville City and we're asking Twilla County to adopt the same parameters. And so I think the plan would be that the parameters would be the same for everybody going forward. Anybody who wants to come in and ask for tax increment participation has to live under the same parameters so that you won't get different deals from different entities when that time comes. I think the other point that I wanted to mention is you're absolutely right and I think the cities are always in the same business. We all have constituents we have to serve. And unfortunately for all of us, the only way we get to serve those is we have property taxes. And the city has to provide fire, police and that too. And if we don't do economic development, meaning if we can't bring industries in, then we are left to build you houses.
Right.
And I think that we're trying to balance that need between everybody. We would prefer to bring in an industry because that industry brings bigger assessed valuation, which helps us all. It doesn't require as much services on all of us than it does on a house. And so we struggle with that, but economic development is also a tool that helps us do what we want. And you're right. I agree with Scott. I mean, we have not done our job of trying to be a better partner with the education. And that's what, I mean, I was told sometimes it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission. And I think what we're doing today is we're saying, hey, we've done a lousy job and we're going to try to do a better job. One of the things I will commit to you, that I will commit to you that any time we do a development agreement where we're giving a tax incentive to a company, we are going to require that company in the agreement to make a contribution back to the community. And we have to determine what's the best way of doing that. We have to sit down and find out what that is. I am very disappointed that I found out from the superintendent that Purple has not stepped up to the commitment that I believe that they made to Ed and I when we met with them in June. And Ed and I are going back and we're going to have another commitment with them. Their first incentive is due to be paid to them next year and I'm going to make it very clear that I don't care if it's a lawsuit or what. They made a commitment. They need to step up to the plate and do it, or I'm going to take it from the tax increment payment. One way or the other, we're going to come back and pay the Education Foundation what was said that we would do. And we will do that with every business. We don't have, I don't have a problem with the business telling them, you're getting an incentive from a community. You need now to participate with that community. And we just need to figure out what the best ways is to do that participation. So that's one thing we're going to try to do. So there can be some payback coming back. I think the second thing that we're trying to do is we're going to try to work out a way that, how we can do it, that maybe we can do administrative fee, maybe there's something else we can do that we can have at least some reciprocal. Will it be what you're giving? No, but at least it'll, I hope it'll make everybody feel better that we're getting something back from the business that we're trying to bring in.
While you're coming up, Randy, can I just add some perspective to this?
Sure.
If you looked at thirteen years, let's say it was thirteen years, and you look at our projections for enrollment, we're going to need a high school in the North Twilla area. That's ninety million. We're going to need a junior high in the Stansbury area. That's fifty million. We're going to need an elementary in Grantsville and one, whether it's in Overlake or Lake Point or, you know, we don't want Stockton or what, you know, kind of a thing. Just doing the rough math, ninety, a hundred, a hundred and forty, two hundred million dollars. Probably in the next ten years, five to ten, two hundred million dollars. So it's a real hard pill to swallow when you think, all right, we're funded by the state, basically roughly six thousand from earlier discussion, some higher, some lower, but our average was sixty-five hundred. So per student. Half of that comes roughly from WPU. That's equalized. The other half comes from property tax and I don't need to show you the assessed valuation and how, because we're currently fighting to get equalization in the state. We're already one of the lowest communities in assessed valuation. So it almost doesn't even logically follow that you would give away fifty percent of your funding source or fifty percent of that fifty percent. Do you see what I'm saying? In any new development, because that's where we're looking. The only way we capture growth is property tax because we don't, we don't capture growth. We have two thousand new students this year. We won't be paid this year. So we have expenses this year from ITech High, but we're not paid till next year because it's October first count from the year previous year. Does that make sense? So when we have growth, the only way we capture it is property tax. So we're talking about half of our income stream. Now, I don't know what half of the city's in. We don't have a sales tax income stream. Half of our income tax stream is property tax. We're already on the low side because, you know, we're sixty-five hundred. You got Salt Lake at, I don't know what they're at.
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen and Granite's at eighty-five and, you know, so we're already disadvantaged. So it really is like asking a disadvantaged, poor family to cough up half of their income. Does that make, I just want to.
If I can help address the other income source, I think a lot of families have two incomes. And I think that that's something when we sit down and talk about this, let me give you the, for instance, your property tax base, so are we, but sales tax base allows us to do a lot more. So for instance, on the interlocal agreement we've been discussing on the soft. So for instance, on the interlocal agreement we've been discussing on the softball fields, that seven hundred and fifty thousand has to come out of our general fund. Without economic development, it's not there because our costs rise like yours. So why we may be losing, because we still lose property tax in this issue, but the money has to come from somewhere and so as we create economic development, it helps to replace that. So when you're talking two and a half million over ten years, we're doing a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment in one. The, you look at, hopefully you'll see that, and, and this is an example that is very tangible. Our pool, our, our replacement costs on our pool have escalated exponentially over the last six years. With Grantsville High's team coming into that pool, with Stansbury High, not only have we had to reseal the pool, we've had to go and replaster the pool, we've completely redone the locker rooms, that was to the tone of about two hundred thousand dollars which in the initial agreement didn't anticipate any other schools being allowed in, it was for Twilla High. But we've tried to be good partners and we hope that that's one part of the benefit that you'll see as part of the bargain. If you only look at par- property tax, then it is, but if you take those things away, you're looking at one and a half million dollars to build a softball field and you have to go acquire the property and in an escalating environment, that's extremely difficult. When we've talked about Settlement Canyon Elementary in and of itself, look at your acreage there and multiply that in a residential district and then try and go build. The CLC, the cost per acre, we're selling our land, fifty-two thousand, I think you guys got it under eight, for improved land. There are tangible costs that have to be written in that aren't necessarily in your balance sheet and so we hope that the partnership will show that. Now, I was dismayed and utterly disgusted at what happened with Purple, as you were. I, I want you to know that, I think you can tell our disdain for that agreement. Therefore, as we go forward, our redevelopment agency has made the commitment that to TEF and to you, that those agreements will not only be ratified with that written in. And I think we've gotten a little bit of an education over the last ten years about what happens when agreements don't have things written in, I think as a city, we can speak to that and therefore we are probably over the top in how to get there. We hope that you will see, if we bring in a thirty-eight million dollar investment, that you're going to get the money off of that quicker than you will off of a housing development because I can tell you taxing for two hundred million in this district, if you thought that levy was hard, wait till you do that one. Rest assured, and you're going to need everyone coming to the table to talk about, how do we best do this? And we as a city understand what you're under, we've agreed with your position. We just wanna be able to see, are there different ways that you can get the money back to you that gives you a return on your investment and, and I hope that you've seen that, I, I really do, I hope that you've seen we tried to give it back to you in some way.
Yeah, I, a- and I appreciate, uh, the efforts and, and recognize that there are those things. Um, and, and you know, Ed will probably shoot me and it's nothing against the Educational Foundation because I think they do some great work, but at the same time, the Educational Foundation's not the ones that are paying our salaries, the salaries of those teachers and the Educational Foundation's not building classrooms. They're doing some marvelous things and I don't wanna dismiss what they're doing and, and some of the, you know, Randy, you, some of the things you've suggested, land in that arena, but those things are encumbered and they're, you know, there's some requirements that those, but they're not able to help us on a day-to-day operational basis and that's, that's where we're losing, the, the revenue side, the, the property taxes coming into that and when it goes to those other things, now it can replace and I, I, I understand some of those things, but my concern is, however we structure some of those, those ideas, we, we've got to make sure that we end up back in those day-to-day operational kind of dollars and, and not get carried away with, you know, with the foundation and, 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 and it's nothing, Ed's doing a wonderful job with the foundation and the foundation's doing great work and I don't mean it as a knock on that, but I, I don't want us to see that, those aren't all necessarily the same. And we do have other financial methodologies, for instance, for the property, for the, for the buses and, and so, the, the challenge there is, you know, because we have all these, you know, accounts and departments and, and that they're limited, you know, by statute where dollars can land, it, it's some, the, the most difficult part is that day-to-day operational dollars to pay teachers and to, you know, turn the lights on and, and so all those other things are wonderful, but, but we've gotta structure the deals in those day-to-day, where we had to go to the voters to get that, that voted leeway and that's where tho- that dol- those dollars go and that's where my concern is with, with RDAs is because we're, you know, by the skin of our teeth, we, we, you know, the vote of leeway passed. At some point here in the very, fairly near future, in the next few years, we're gonna have to go to the public and ask for another and it's not just Twilla City voters that, that vote and so when we're seeing property taxes being, you know, not, not given away, I, I don't, cause that's not true, but-
Rerouted.
Rerouted.
Twilla City, it, it, you know, it, and it requires a broader base for us to get some of those things passed and so just being sensitive that, I, those are just a couple of points, I just gotta make sure I emphasize.
I, I really appreciate that and I think what we're willing to do is, we want you to tell us how you want us to help you. I, I think that that's what we're here to talk about today is how can we be a better partner with you and what you need. Redevelopment, there's a lot of stuff that an RDA can do that might be able to help you, I can go out and buy your land for you. I, I, there, there's things that-
But see, that's where our challenge isn't necessarily around land.
Well, tha- that's what I'm trying to say is there's probably things we can do, I've, uh, I've, I've, I wanna sit and have a time to talk with Lark and the superintendent about, uh, uh, because property tax are restricted to certain things, but if you give me your property tax and I give it back to you, it's no longer restricted. And I've worked with school districts that what they prefer to do with an RDA is give them a hundred percent of it and then make a deal of, you give me back so much money because I don't have that restriction on that property tax that's under the state statute. So I'm just saying there are probably things we can sit down and talk about that we could do it, but I think what we're, we're coming to you today to tell you is, we've been a lousy partner when it comes to economic development and I'll be the first to stand up and admit that, that's my job, my job's to bring everybody to the table, we haven't done that. I think we had a great meeting on Octo- on, on September twenty-ninth or October twenty-seventh, that we started to talk and we started to look at how we can be better partners and we wanna be better partners. We realize and, and we could argue till the sun comes down, whether a company's coming with or without the incentive and I, we, I don't wanna even get into that. I could tell you that when we bring you the information, we will bring you, the analysis that we've done, we'll give you all the information we can tell you to show you that the incentive is necessary. But what we're trying to say is, we want to be better partners, the city can be a partner when they've been a great partner with, with you in the past, now I'm saying, let's let the economic development come in and be a good partner to you and let's find out ways that we can help, however it might be, that would be the best for you, whether that be the Education Foundation, whether that be a way to get more money back into the coffer so you can do other things that are important for your budgets, whatever that is, we just wanna talk down. But we do, really, I understand better than anybody that every time you give a tax dollar to a business, it's going not to education and we have to be very sensitive of that. So that's why we're trying to set parameters that would work for both of us, maybe more for us and not, you, you're having the bigger pain, try to get it done as quick as we can so the investment can give back on the tax rolls. I think it's important to know, if we know that there's gotta be a two hundred million dollar bond in ten years or twelve years or whatever that is, then to me-
Like two.
Or two years, okay. I, I'm just saying, whatever that period of time is, we need to sit down and kinda say, okay, how can we, how can we get these things back on the tax rolls faster? There might be some things we can do that with an existing project area, if we get it extended, maybe that is enough cash, I don't have to create another project area, we can use with what you haven't had. So these are the things we have to sit down and talk about, we, we probably take more time than we needed on this, but I want to say, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity for the communication, cause that's what we really need. I will get the information for this project area with the spreadsheets and the budgets, it will show you what you're collecting and what you're giving and what those numbers are over that period of time and then I think you, I'll, I'll also take the opportunity just to prepare an interlocal agreement.
I was just gonna ask you to do.
Uh, and, and have that ready to go, we cannot do that until after we adopt the bu- after we create the RDA on the sixth, but, uh, we're gonna go ahead and have that public hearing, but I will get that information to the superintendent so you can see the budget beforehand.
If you can have that interlocal agreement prepared though, we can put it on our agenda for our December meeting and if there are problems and you say we can wait till January, then we can work out any details-
We, we'll do that.
On January, but.
We'll have that ready for you December meeting.
Anytime when you get the legislature to fund education at a decent level and then we could have a little more money to loan you.
Or let us get impact fees or something, yeah, go ahead Superintendent.
I, I, I wanna make sure that we understand with the voted levy, that money is all committed.
Yeah, to teacher salary.
We pass that for a hundred percent, teacher salaries.
Employee.
Employee salaries.
Employee salaries, support professionals and our administrators, uh, we've gotta do that to stay competitive and so that money's not on the table at all, so I appreciate that we're talking about the, 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 the two thousand sixteen, uh, levy rate because all of that new money is committed and it's important to me that we keep our promises, uh, uh.
It's important to all of us that we keep our promises.
That's our, that's our, that's our biggest need right now, uh, is, is salaries, uh, attractive salaries and so while it may not seem like a high, um, you know, a, a big win, fifty-two percent compared to forty-eight percent, um, it's a lot harder in today's climate to sell a levy and a bond is easier. I know, you know, the districts that sold the big bond and they didn't all pass, um, but they have, you know, buildings, hey, you're gonna get your school built, this was cl- very clear upfront, all about teachers and salaries and retention and recruitment for our great people, so, uh, that's, that's our commitment.
Okay, thank you for coming, hopefully you didn't feel like we were beating you up or anything, I, like, I think the good dial- dialogue is good. Um, we'll put it on our agenda for December, go from there, the board has only had this, this information for a couple of days, so that gives you another month to read through it, look at those parameters, think about it, we'll have further discussion in December. So ponder, whatever, yes.
Please feel free to call at any point if you have questions, please call.
Sure, thank you for that and thank you, thank you for coming and, and support.
Thank you guys, appreciate it. Uh, yes, you said-
Mr. Sinclair, I'm glad you just live a couple of blocks away, cause you've been here for a while.
So originally, like, we work in a very, uh, online, fluid collaborative environment and we thought, we'll just send Diana a link to our presentation and then we'll sit outside at the table and we'll like hide the slides that we don't really wanna talk about tonight and then, so we're like busy in there hiding slides and kind of like buttoning things up and only to realize that it's actually a PDF that you have and we can't alter it at all. So, um, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna give you guys a, a couple of specific slides that I want you to take a peek at, um, if I can get this guy to hook up. It was an awesome job, an awesome conference. There we go, we're gonna go like that. Okay, so, and I can't really show it out front, so you guys are just out of luck. Alright, um, so you guys have a lot more information in there really than I wanna kind of go over, so I'll kinda try and just say, oh, page number, whatever, and we can give you a little bit of information. Um, overall, uh, pretty pleased with Tech Toberfest this year and I wanna thank the board members that were there, like, it was nice to see you guys, we had a good time, um, the, uh, skit tradition is a little bit, is, can be troublesome, but anyways, we like have a really good time and, uh, it's nice to really see all of the teachers. We, we work with, um, a lot of teachers all across the district and, um, certain groups, we kinda focus on a little more than others, so we spend a lot more time with new teachers, tonight we were working with new teachers up until, uh, six PM when we came over here. Um, and it's just kinda nice to get all those folks together and you're, you've got the, the old school teachers and the new teachers and everybody are kinda focused on becoming a better teacher and a more professional teacher in that environment and I like that it's, uh, tech-centric as well. Um, anyway, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip down to slide number four. Um, and some of this is just, uh, kind of overview information, uh, sessions are kind of unique sessions, so while there were, or while there were ninety-eight, um, unique sessions, we had more sessions than just that, some of them were doubles, um, presenters, ninety different presenters from all across the state, although if you notice, sixty-six. Well, initially we were gonna have numbers and Katie was like, no, we have to have percentages because they don't add up.
Percent, but.
Yeah, I guess we're off by a few percent. Um, I didn't even realize that until I'm looking at it right now.
I'm not a math major either, but I'm a business major, so maybe I don't-
Okay, the important message here, Marisa, is that the mass majority of that, uh,
Was from our district.
Knowledge was from in our district, right? A, a very large amount of the expertise came from right inside of it.
I'm gonna round it up to seventy-two in my mind.
Yeah, there you go, round it up seventeen, round it up seventeen and we're good. Okay, uh, Marie sent us some pictures and we've got a lot of great, um, pictures in there from the event, it's pretty exciting. We, we had the new wireless up and, uh, although we had a, kind of a, the whole system melted down during the beginning of the first session, uh, it took Alan about twenty minutes or so to get things kind of back up and rolling and it performed amazingly for the rest of the day and amazing amounts of technology on, you would think some of those teachers were like, like connecting with three or more devices all at once, right? Because of the amount of traffic that was happening, uh, which is better than ever before, that was probably the biggest improvement from a, a technical standpoint is, uh, that was always a very high area for complaining and people being frustrated and everything and that was a real win, we got a lot of good feedback on that, which was a first for the conference, so. Um, uh, slide six kinda shows you the breakdown, one of the things that we found, um, so one of the big changes that we put into place this year is we did not track attendance specifically. We tried to incentivize feedback, so we had surveys that were given at the end of each session as well as the end of the day. Um, this is, shows all of the people that filled out the end-of-the-day survey and one of the questions on that was kind of, what is your role in the district? And so these are voluntary surveys, many of them would have been anonymous as well, which becomes important when we start looking at a couple of the other charts that I'm gonna show you. Um, uh, one of the interesting things is, if you notice, that para educator bar is just ever so slightly bigger than our administrator bar, right, that filled out the survey. Um, the, last year was the first year that para educators participated and I think we really struggled to kinda, kinda meet their needs that year and I think we did a much better job with that, that group this year. Um, okay, I'm gonna skip down to, uh, we've got a couple of things, like there's a slide here that I've got hidden that talks about, um, the SGEJ attendance and I think people are really getting used to that tool, we've implemented that scheduling tool for the professional learning series and I think just the numbers of people that are registering and using the tool is pretty stable across the year, so I think people are, are comfortable with that. Um, survey responses, one of the, one of the things that we run into that's kind of, kind of a little bit of trouble in analyzing the data, um, and we've really only started looking at the data, there's a few people over here that are on the Tech Toberfest team that will, that, then we've kind of really started to dig into the data, but it's still early in looking at that, those survey results. But when you ask somebody to give you a feedback survey, but we're not tracking attendance, you can only gauge like, uh, correlation between the number of surveys that are, that are submitted versus the actual attendance. And so we can't really say the attendance levels are at this five hundred or so, um, range because that's only based on the people that voluntarily give, gave us the feedback. But in terms of preparation, determining what we need to change or what we need to do better, the survey results are much, much more valuable than simply knowing that, uh, a, a person was in a seat in an individual session, so we're- So we're hopeful that as we look at the data, that we're gonna learn a lot more from this than simply tracking attendance. Really just to kind of let you in on like some of our thought process behind some of the changes that we've made. Keynote on slide nine, Derek Larson, he taught, so this is the second year in a row that we've taken somebody. We've had somebody that's local to education in our state that has been our keynote. And I think that that trend is probably something that we want to stick with. It's been very successful. They seem to be received a lot better from our, our teachers. Some of the early ones that we used, people are, they're a little bit distant from or detached from or even irritated by, which I don't necessarily think is a bad thing. But I, I feel like this direction and we're probably gonna stick with that.
Can I say something, just because it was right around this time, but you, you gave those awards to a couple of innovators in technology in the district? Right before the, and I have to tell you that I ran into one of them at a soccer game and said, hey, congratulations, that's awesome. I wish we could have given you a trip to Disneyland or something, you know, rather than just a certificate. And this teacher specifically was very appreciative of even just having a little recognition and certificate. So kudos to you guys. I think that was a great thing that hopefully we continue to do. Because even though there was no really grand, grand prize, just a little bit of recognition for some innovation is fantastic.
There was a, there was a lot of debate around that. And I think initially there was some thought of having some kind of a prize or something to go with. But I think that like the, the overwhelming opinion from the team was, we want this to be a valuable, important recognition of people and not have it be like some cool thing that you've won, right?
I think it worked.
And, yeah, and we also tried to keep it pretty small, too. There was some concern that like all three of our winners were elementary and I don't, I, I think there's been like zero fallout from that. Because I think we're truly trying to look for people that are, have made a difference on their faculty and made a difference in their school through using technology in their classroom. So, and we absolutely intend to continue that. Let's see. Anyways, Derek's a great guy. And if you ever get a chance to see him speak at anything, he does, he's done a few other things around the state. And he's pretty charismatic and he's really down to earth and he speaks from experience. It's not any, all the stuff that he's talking about is stuff that he has personally been involved in or helped develop. And he's a great speaker. Does a lot of work with C-Forum and some of the other professional groups or educator groups in the state. He's very respected. So I would encourage you to, you could even reach out and say, thanks, Derek, you were awesome. Yeah, so he does a lot of work with UN Group and, okay, so I want to, this was a initiative. So we're, we're looking at slide eleven and this was kind of some of the new things that we've put into place this year. And Superintendent Rogers like really pushed for this, reaching out to the local charter schools and trying to help that, that. And it sounds like from this very heavy conversation in the last forty-five minutes, that this partnership deal is, is like an important thing for us. And we got really great feedback. I think those folks were absolutely thrilled to be able to participate. And it really, basically, I think it was like maybe three cents in card stock to make them a little badge. And that was our only like actual cost to allow them to participate, right? So it really was no extra to have them participate and I thought it turned out really well. Let's see. Okay, we've talked about surveys instead of tracking attendance. We changed up the prize system. That jury's still out on that. We may, may have some, some future stuff to kind of work with there. The, some of the great feedback that we got was we spent a lot of time trying to make sure that our session descriptions and that our presenters were prepared, that they were feeding people accurate information. And I want to show you some of the data that came back from that. So we, we intentionally designed our form to kind of give us enough information to feed to our conference participators so that they would know what's gonna apply to them, where could they go, how could they identify good sessions that would apply to them and meet their goals. And so this is some of the feedback that we got on fifteen. So descriptions, this was an area that we struggled with last year with where the descriptions of sessions, people found it difficult to kind of match up. And so we focused on that and the feedback was overwhelming.
I personally think you did a much better job this year because I went to a couple last year that I was totally didn't understand.
It took a lot of wrangling of folks and making sure that things were accurate, but we had, we kind of made that a goal for ourselves and, and it, and I believe it paid off. Yeah.
You did a very good job this year.
Tech Innovator Award is one of the new things from this year. We would definitely continue that. Presenter lunches, you guys want to hear about that? This is something that will be ongoing and, and now in thinking about turning the conference towards PBIS for next year, like some of these are things that I think that we can pass along to the organizers on that. And we can help with kind of getting them focused on stuff that makes a difference for us.
Element, but it'll be focused around classroom management and that kind of a thing. But we still have to have this core conference committee help us with that.
And a lot of these needs and things for, from a conference perspective is not really, it's not really tech. Like anybody can be a conference organizer, right? The content is tech, but they're gonna need a lot of that structural side from the backend and that's where we can be helpful. Also knew this year was work sessions. We spent a lot of time discussing this as a team and figuring out how to kind of implement this. Because we didn't want to, we didn't want to overdo it. We didn't want to give people like in-conference opportunities to opt out. And so here's kind of, I was kind of surprised at the number of people that actually didn't really participate in a work session, right? Now, those that worked in a work session felt like they were organized and that they were well-supported, right? So they, the feedback on facilitators and, and whatnot for those work sessions was very positive. But there weren't as many people that participated as I thought. So people were definitely seeking out training for specific tools or to meet specific needs, right?
Pause for one second. Can I have a motion to extend time for fifteen minutes?
I'm over. These guys are all disappointed with me now.
Is there a second?
It's just the tentacle curfew.
Okay, so moved by Kathy and seconded by Carol to extend time for fifteen minutes. All in favor? Any opposed?
Don't vote no.
I would have seconded, I would have seconded ten minutes.
Sorry. Okay, motion carries. Continue. Thanks.
I mean, you can just send me home. All right, I'll, I'll move quickly. Anyway, so here's a picture of the end of the day. It's kind of fun. There's definitely, if you, you look at this crowd versus the picture of the crowd at the beginning, we definitely have a few fewer. And then when you're asking them, did you learn, like, I think like the traditional question is, you know, like, who, who got something that you can take back and apply immediately? And then you got this one guy like right down here in the middle that is like, keeps his arms down. And he's like, no way, I got nothing out of this. Anyways, but, okay. This is some pretty great stuff when you talk about an improvement and what, where they, where they would have judged themselves before they went in versus, to a session versus what they feel like they left with. And I think there was pretty much universal improvement across the board. Like people felt like they were gaining from those, from those sessions. We still have a lot of work to do and I won't bore you with the details. So we will, we'll continue to strive to make it better. And I think that we've learned a lot these last four years about putting on a conference. And I think that that's gonna be really useful in, I think, I like the idea of the PBIS. I think that if you look at that, those two sides, those can be absolutely the most, most struggle that a lot of teachers experience are gonna be in things like behavior management and organization and things like that. And then tech on the other side. So I like this idea that we're, the direction that we're going.
Was it kind of like an every other year thing or, I don't know, I don't know the background at all? But, because this seems like a big deal and a good thing and I've heard lots of positive comments. I understand the importance of PBIS, but.
Yeah, I think so. I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not certain that the idea is completely fleshed out at this point. Anyways, so again, thanks for your continued support. It, I, I think that a lot of teachers don't necessarily get the benefit of networking in a professional learning environment where they choose what it is that they want to learn about and what they want to do. And just because the job is big and when you are in your classroom and you're faced with this big massive job, you don't necessarily go out and seek this type of environment to spend your free time in. And so providing that for these folks is huge in my opinion and I thank you for continuing to support it. So, thank you very much.
Just one thought, and it may be too late at this point this year, but I leaned over to Marisa and commented that this would be a really great presentation to share at the USBA, at the, the conference in January. And, and you really wouldn't have to do anything more than use the PowerPoint presentation you've shared with us with a little bit of content.
It's a fifteen minute class.
No, but I'm saying, but this, but this becomes a.
Hold on a minute, are we Scott, are we volunteering Scott for this presentation?
No, I think.
Are we volunteering me for this presentation because?
I delegate.
It's actually probably too late for this January, but they are always asking for presenters. And I always think somebody from our district should present something in this.
And I was sitting by two administrators from two Salt Lake districts, one from Canyons and one from Jordan. And they said, we're a lot bigger than you and we don't do anything close to this. So kudos to you and the whole team for putting on a great conference. A lot of work.
This year, so this is the second year that we've had C-Forum participate. And last year it was chaotic and the food trucks were a nightmare and things were kind of a mess. And C-Forum was basically kind of like on their own and we did not get much of a chance to interact with them. This year, things were so smooth and worked so well. And these guys just sort of held the fort down. And Katie and Jim and I were able to spend the entire afternoon with C-Forum. And we were able to, normally C-Forum is a, a group of ed techs like myself from districts all over the state. And they get together once a month and they share. And the host district is supposed to teach, right? Well, last year we hosted, but we didn't get to teach. And this year we got to teach the afternoon and, and it was pretty powerful. When you sit down and you're, you're working through some of our new teacher training with folks from Alpine District. And they're like, we basically feed our new teachers to the wolves technology-wise because we don't provide them anything. And so it was really, really great that, that day. It turned out really great. We were pleased, so.
Thank you. Thanks to the team. Yeah, everybody.
Good job, team. And others that are not here. You what? I am absolutely.
I will support whoever you choose, man.
Anyways, thank you. Sorry to, uh.
Sorry it's so late.
Yeah, it's okay.
Thanks again.
I only live a few blocks away.
Yeah, well, it's so late. Okay, we're not gonna close any schools.
Board members, we are not going to close any boundaries to open enrollment. That still leaves us an option if we're discussing school closure or boundary adjustments. But we're not saying that there are schools that need to close based on high numbers at this point in time, so.
Thank you.
Open enrollment will be open at all schools is what I'm saying. There, there might be some other issues with some other boundary issues, as you know, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, canvas results of the November seventh, two thousand seventeen levy election and consider adoption of resolution ratifying the results of levy election. Apparently Brandon did not like the way I did it last time. So he has told me what I need to do correctly this time.
Can anyone make motion one?
So the first motion I need is to.
Here, Alan and I will get you through this fast.
Are you doing one?
You go one, I'll.
I move that we recess as the Board of Education convene as a Board of Canvassers.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been by Scott and sec, no, moved by Ellen, seconded by Scott to recess as the Board of Education convene as a Board of Canvassers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So I'll motion to publicly proceed to canvas and declare the results of the special voted leeway election.
Second.
I think Alan beat you. It's been moved by Scott.
I just thought he wasn't gonna do it.
I was, I was wondering why Scott read it weirdly, but anyway.
I got it. It's been moved by Scott and seconded by Ellen to publicly proceed to canvas and declare the results of the special voted local levy election. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did anybody look, well, did everybody look at the election results?
Yeah.
Absolutely, I did.
Two hundred votes.
Two eighty-one.
Yeah, almost three hundred.
Was the difference.
Too close for comfort.
But still passing. Okay, go ahead with your motion.
I move that we now adjourn as the Board of Canvassers and reconvene as the Board of Education for consideration of resolution finding and promulgating the election results.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Ellen and seconded by Scott to adjourn as the Board of Canvassers and reconvene as the Board of Education for consideration of resolution finding and promulgating the election results. Now we have to adopt the resolution.
No, all in favor?
Oh, all in favor.
Aye.
Thanks for keeping me on track. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we need to adopt the resolution.
I motion to adopt the resolution finding and promulgating the results of the special bond election.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Scott and seconded by Ellen to adopt the resolution finding and promulgating the results of the special bond election. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That means we won the election.
Officially.
Officially. Thank you to everybody who supported it and yay for our faculty who are all gonna get a raise.
Your bags of money are out on the floor as you run your way out there. Pick them up.
Granted, apparently Twila City's taking that from you.
Oh, after they leave?
That was a low.
After they leave, you drop that?
I made it very clear that nobody will take that money.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing everybody. It's ten o'clock and I'm just having some fun.
Bad. Okay, no more. Okay, no more. Okay, new policy for special education, um, new policy, whatever. We don't have a number yet.
Can we just move into the next one?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't know that you need to say a lot about this. It's seventy-two pages long.
Yeah. But I think. Could we add a few more pages? I mean, seventy-five seems like a good cut of that.
But I think we just need to get it out there.
Yeah, the reason, we have not had special education policy as part of our policy manual ever. The last time that special education policy was addressed, Doleen was the Director of Special Education. So this brings us, it, it, you have before you the model policy from the state. Diane's been cursing me for a few weeks about trying to get it formatted into our.
You might want to talk to the state about having some shorter model policies.
I know, seriously.
But, yeah, this is short for them. It brings it in line with the new rules that they passed last year. The new special education rules that they passed last year brings us in line with that, so.
Is this a Guinness Record of Longest Policy?
No.
Have we checked?
Scott's ready with the motion.
I motion that we.
No.
Bring it for a second.
Second reading. Move forward, the new proposed policy for special education for a second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Scott and seconded by Julia to approve the new policy for special education for, for a second reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, Scott.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Alan wants to adjourn and Scott seconds.
For the record, I was teasing.
She's filled with three grads. I love it.
Off the record.
Are we done? We adjourned, right?
Please scratch that. I'm gonna be in deep, too.
You saw Mr. Gillie still sitting over there, right?
Thank you everyone for staying forever.
See you guys. Have a good night. See you guys. Have a good night.